Good evening. I'd like to call this September 4, 2018, regular meeting to order. Our mission is to provide an excellent equitable education in a safe supportive environment so all students will succeed and contribute to a diverse and changing society. Ms. Tuttle, would you please, oh, sorry, we need to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Rice, would you lead us?
When the students aren't here, I skip things because I'm so used to their performances.
Ms. Tuttle, would you please call the roll? Mr. Jerome?
Here.
Colonel Blanderant?
Here.
Colonel Fisher?
Here.
Ms. McConnell?
Here.
Mr. Doran?
Present.
Mrs. Dominique?
Here.
Mr. Rice?
Here.
Mr. Bartels?
Here.
Mrs. Lambert?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
The board has a call. Thank you. Before we move on with our agenda, I wanted to take a moment. At the beginning of each school year, we recognize those that retired after we did our celebration in May. So I wanted to just recognize these folks. Nora Gruner, special education teacher at Nordale Elementary, retired in May after five years with the school district. Valerie Dewey, West Valley High School Prevention Intervention Specialist, retired in May with six years of district service. John Scanlon, 12-month custodian at Hutchinson High School, retired with nine years of district service. Sarah Masterman, Barnett Magnet School Teacher, retired at the end of the year with 11 years of service. Sandra DeNoble, Anne Ween Special Education, retired with 12 years of district service. Janine Smith, After-School Programs Secretary, retired at the end of May after 13 years with the district. Kathleen Dodson, retired as the Administrative Secretary at Denali Elementary School with 14 years of district service. Marilis Homaleski, retired as the ER Special Education Aid at Emily Tukasik Brown Elementary School with 18 years of district service. Freda Schreier, Secondary Teacher at Tanan Middle School, retired with 19 years with the district. Marion Lundquist, Denali Elementary Teacher, retired with 20 years of service. Marcia Martin, retired from Hutchinson High School as the Administrative Secretary with 20 years of district service. Young Kim, ELL Tutor at Lathrop High School, retired after 32 years with the school district. And Lisa Meath, also retired with 32 years of district service. I know. As a Barnett Magnet School Elementary Teacher. All total, these additional retirees equal 211 years of district service and added to the previous retirees for the 2017-18 school year. It equates to a total of 1,237 years of district experience. A special thank you to all of our retirees and those that we just read for all of their years of service. And now, we will move to honoring our Alaska 2018 National Distinguished Principal. Michael Angayek, Anne Ween Elementary School Principal, received the 2018 National Distinguished Principal Award. Catherine Lapont, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Elementary Education, will make the presentation.
Thank you so much. And it's wonderful. I'd like to say good evening and welcome to our Anne Ween community here and listening at home, and especially welcome to Marie and Andy Angayek. It is my honor to introduce Michael Angayek, Principal of Anne Ween Elementary School, devoted father to Kip, Gabe, and Ava, committed and loving partner to Amanda Angayek, who is also a successful principal in our community. Tonight, I am privileged to help the Fairbanks North Star Borough School Board recognize Michael as the 2018 National Distinguished Elementary Principal of the Year for Alaska. This national honor is bestowed on one deserving elementary principal per state, and this year, Michael Angayek has brought it home to Fairbanks. But that has always been Michael's way. Bring it home, whether it's home to Alaska after going to Notre Dame or sliding into home plate during a rousing game of baseball. Michael, who could have set his sights on politics afar, has found himself most content when he is serving family and community right here at home. It is also fitting that it is while serving as principal at Anne Ween Elementary School that he receives this recognition. Anne Ween has been his educational home for many years, and it was there that he was first encouraged by his mentor, Leslie Campbell, to pursue his principal degree. Leslie was a strong advocate for young learners in our community, and she saw in Michael someone with a passion for service and the ability to listen first and lead second. At first, Michael couldn't see himself anywhere other than the classroom. He loved teaching, coaching, and helping students overcome challenges, but soon he discovered that all those needs also exist with teachers and parents and the community. His patience and encouraging style make it easy for Michael to talk to, and he has become well-known for his creative and collaborative problem-solving style. During his time at Anne Ween, Michael has partnered with Leslie's children to stock weekend pantry and food supplies for students to take home. He has advocated for full-day kindergarten and spearheaded our kindergarten jump-start programs. He has supported the Fairbanks Native Association Alaska Native Language Preschool Program and works alongside his Title I colleagues to bring the best instructional coaching and professional development to our community. Michael does all this while raising a family, volunteering, coaching, and being a sports announcer for youth events. Michael is as confident as he is humble, someone who would rather shine the spotlight than to take it. And so it feels appropriate that we take a moment to acknowledge this home run from our hometown hero. Please join me in congratulating a person who makes us all want to be our best, Michael Angayek. We were looking for you before the meeting started, and we saw multiples of you, and we could not find you in the room because there were so many Flat Michael Angayeks. Congratulations and thank you so much for your service to the district and to all of Fairbanks' kids.
Well, next move to the adoption of the agenda. Consent agenda items marked with an asterisk are considered routine items not requiring public discussion by the school board. Unless removed from the consent agenda, asterisk items will be automatically approved when the agenda is adopted. Questions concerning these items should be directed to the administration before the meeting. If the superintendent or a member of the public wishes to have an item removed from the consent agenda, the request must be made to a board member any time prior to the start of the meeting. The board member has the right to accept or deny the request. Only a board member may remove an item from the consent agenda. If an item is removed from the consent agenda, it shall be considered separately as the last item of new business. Asterisk items will then be adopted by one single motion.
Oh, I thought you were supposed to, okay. I would like to recuse myself from the adoption of the agenda with consent items due to my interest in consent item H3, travel requests Hutchinson and North Pole High Schools.
Make a regular motion to adopt the agenda with consent items.
Second. Okay. Ms. Tuttle, could you please call the vote? Colonel Blanderant?
Yes.
Colonel Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. McConnell?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Dominique?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Bartels?
Yes.
Mrs. Lambert?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. And could you please read the consent agenda?
The board has accepted the award in the amount of $32,720 for the Perkins Teacher Professional Development Grant from the Federal Department of Education via the Alaska Department of Education Early Development per fiscal note 2019-06. Approved Boriel Sun Charter Schools' request to send its 5th grade class and chaperones to Denali National Park, September 12 through the 14, 2018, where students will participate in a Ranger-led program for the 5th grade botnic course at no cost to the district. But, excuse me, but if Homeland Security issues travel warnings, students will not travel. The board has approved Hutchinson and North Pole High Schools' request to send five Future Farmers of America FFA students and an instructor to Indianapolis, Indiana, October 22 through the 27, 2018, where students will attend and compete in the National FFA Convention with the district paying for substitute teacher costs, but if Homeland Security issue travel warnings, students will not travel. Approved North Pole High Schools' request to raise funds to send its International Club students to Costa Rica, November 17 through the 25, 2018, where students will visit different regions within the country to experience the cultures, languages, and traditions of the areas at no cost to the district, but if the State Department issues travel warnings, students will not travel. The board has accepted the gift of miscellaneous school supplies valued at $1,450 from the United Way of Tanan Valley, KTVF, Mann Real Estate, and Walmart to the school district to be distributed to district students. They have accepted the gift of $2,000 from the Lathrop class of 1957 to Lathrop High School to fund the alumni scholarship. Approved the minutes from the special meeting on August 20 and the regular meeting on August 21, 2018 as submitted, and approved the personal action report for the period August 10 through the 24, 2018. The board has acknowledged the personal information report for the period August 11 through the 24, 2018, the budget adjustment report for the period August 1 through the 15, 2018, the final long-term suspension and expulsion report for the 17-18 school year as of June 30, 2018, the board's reading file, and the coming events and meeting announcements.
Thank you, Ms. Tuttle. Presentation on Agenda Items. Any person wishing to speak on an agenda item, action item, or report will have three minutes to testify when that item is before the school board. There is a limit of one hour total testimony per item. Public Comments on Non-Agenda Items. Public comments on non-agenda items are limited to three minutes per person for a maximum of one hour. People on the sign-up list will be called first. If there is time, people who did not sign up may address the school board. A person testifying must state their name and city of residence for the record. Board members may ask questions for clarification. Although there is time at the end of each meeting for school board and superintendent comments, some concerns may not be able to be addressed immediately as additional information may need to be gathered. On the sign-up list tonight, my first person is Sarah Gear. If you could state your, yep, you can come right up here, state your name and address, or, sorry, name and city of residence for the record. You have three minutes, and the clock is behind me, above me.
Hi, my name's Sarah Gear. I live in Fairbanks, and I'm with Spirit of Alaska Federal Credit Union. The credit union has had a long relationship with the schools. We've had branches in Lathrop High School and worked with classes and things over the years. But I'm here to talk about financial education, and one of the questions we asked was how do we bring some free financial education to the schools here in Fairbanks, something that's effective for students, something that they can really learn from and have a good time with. As I was looking into this problem or this issue, the subject of gamification kept coming up, that children really learn from games, and it helps them remember longer, and that the experience of playing a game really helps the information sink in. And so, through that research, we ran across a program called Bonzai. So we decided to partner with Bonzai, and Bonzai is an online financial education, real-life scenario game. And it has stages appropriate for elementary school kids, stages appropriate for high school, and then there's also, they just released a stage appropriate for even adults or high schoolers, and it talks about credit and saving for a home. It is an excellent program. I've played through it myself. You are not going to beat it the first time, so I actually played it three times, and I couldn't save as much money as they wanted me to. To save as much money as they wanted you to save to get to college, you basically had to buy the cheapest thing there was every single time. So it's a great resource for the schools, and we're excited to sponsor it. We are only sponsoring a certain number of schools in the district. We have picked up all of the high schools, so they will all be able to play Bonzai. It is free for teachers. Teachers can sign up at spiritofak.teachbonzai.com. It also comes with print materials, so they will send you those materials. And it's through the Spirit of Alaska sponsorship. Currently, we are sponsoring Hunter Elementary, Ryan Middle School, Lathrop High School, the Maclet Conception School, Monroe Catholic High School, West Valley High School, Pearl Creek Elementary, Randy Smith Middle School, the Career Education Center, Anne Ween Elementary. We just picked up Anne Ween Elementary, actually. Ben Allison High School, Hutchinson High School, and North Pole High School. So all these, these schools have access to really high-quality financial education for teachers. And I have information with me, some flyers and handouts. If anyone's interested, you could put your hand up, and I'll bring you one, so.
If you want to provide them to Ms. Tuttle, and then she can make sure that we get them, that would be great.
All right.
That would be great. Thank you. Any questions, or, no? Ms. Dominique has a question.
Because you're not at all the schools, are all the students able to access the program, though?
Only the ones at these particular schools. It is a significant financial investment to provide this to the school district. If we were, I mean, I'm not sure if I need to give out numbers, but it's a pretty significant financial, if we were to sponsor every single school in the district. So I think we'd like to get to that point. We haven't seen, we've had this for a year. We haven't seen a lot of teachers signing up, so we were hesitant to kind of throw a really wide net on it, but we did add some more schools this year, so we might slowly do that depending on adoption.
But possibly a partnership with your organization could be, if you talk to Ms. Heather?
Yes, and this, this software is only available to banks and credit unions, so they cater specifically to banks and credit unions to provide this as a service to school districts and communities, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Doran, then Mr. Bartels, then Sergeant, Colonel Blanderant, sorry. Sorry about that.
I've got a personal interest because I started in banking, so I was a late bloomer in education, but glad to see this. Have you had conversations with the curriculum department about how this financial curriculum might dovetail with current school curriculums so that we're not duplicating or trying to do twice as much work type of thing because there is a limited amount of time, but I don't know if that conversation is.
I did work with Heather Ronhurst a little bit with Bright Futures. I think, I believe they did present Bonzai to the curriculum committee. She didn't communicate a lot with how that went, or if it was going to go anywhere, or what they thought. So I think that it has been brought to their awareness, but we could probably do a better job about bringing it in. It is, there's, there's national standards for financial education. Name escapes me at the moment, but it does conform to those standards, so it meets all of those benchmarks for kids, yeah.
Then maybe just to the administration, that at some point, if that hasn't happened, that might be a good thing to, to look at as to how it fits in with that so that teachers do have the, might be even more encouraged to, or taken this, but, you know, how it works out in terms of what they're trying to cover during the year, but.
If I could make one more comment, this is also an online game, so each kid signs up and underneath the teacher's name, so their information is secure and private, but it's something that the kids can do without the teacher. So if they want, if they have some free time, they can go play Bonzai, and they will. They will go play it over and over again, so it's a good, it's a good free time thing for kids to do as well.
So it might be more.
Or at home, they can also go home and play it as well.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Bartels? Colonel Blanderant? Okay. Thank you very much for your testimony. Elizabeth Stapp? Is there an Elizabeth? Okay.
All right, let's see. My name is Dan Hackett. I live in Fox. I have sort of a mixed background. I am a parent, so what I'm going to talk about impacts, or had impact, my child, and I know several people who the policy impacts this year. And I'm also a teacher, so I have insight in terms of that. So what I'm interested in sharing with you is, for about the last, at least the last 15 years, I've worked at Lathrop. Lathrop's math department has been willing to take any kid, any kid from Barnett, any kid from Ryan, or for that matter, any homeschool kid into any of our math classes. So if a kid is high-level math in the middle school, the math department has welcomed the kid to meet their needs. So we've always welcomed them into algebra, geometry, or whatever their actual needs are. And this year, or actually in May, the school district changed the policy where now kids coming in have to talk to the principal, and the principal and teaching and learning resolve how the needs of that kid are met. So every year, we've had three to four kids come over, and this is the first year we've had none, and I assumed it was just because there weren't any kids. And then recently, I found out that two kids wanted to come to Lathrop to take a class early in the morning. Their parents had rearranged their schedule to meet so that they could actually do it, and they were sent to teaching and learning and basically told to take Apex Learning classes. So the school district has switched the position and cited that to not allow kids to come over to Lathrop and take classes. The explanation I've heard is, is enrollment issues. The math teachers are willing to take whoever wants to be in the class, so the math teachers are willing to take those kids. It doesn't cost the school district any money. The math teachers are willing to do the extra work to do this. I've heard issues about equity, that the Barnett and Ryan kids can do it, but nobody else can, so therefore, the district doesn't want to do that. But the math department at Lathrop is willing to take anybody who wants to do the extra work, and currently, the math department, or perhaps me, feels like we're being stymied by that. The parents, my children, have benefited from the program of doing this, walked over from Ryan, and sometimes there is a minor conflict with the class, but it had always been worked out between the two teachers. And the school district has moved the policy away from the teachers, away from the people who actually have concern and caring and who actually know about the kids, to teaching and learning, and basically have denied, and these kids who are advanced at math have put them on a computer and given them their responsibility to learn it on their own or learn it through Apex Learning. So I'm hoping that you're aware of the change in policy. Lathrop would like to continue to take anybody who wants to, but we're feeling stymied, or I am, and the community of advanced kids in middle school is a community that I know pretty well, and there's a lot of us who are very disappointed in this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hackett. Do you know if the families that you're talking about this year have talked to the Lathrop principal?
Not to Lathrop principal. One of the parents came in, one of them was a homeschool parent, so I don't know much about that one. The other one was, I think, from Chinook, and she came in and talked to the counselor. The counselor directed her to teaching and learning, and she contacted a principal friend of hers at West Valley who told her that she had to go through teaching and learning, so that was the same. And then, when she was downtown talking to, I believe, Mel Hadaway, she was told that no students are allowed to take classes outside the building. The justification that this person told me was that Mel, or teaching and learning, had said it has to do with enrollment numbers, and it has to do with time outside the building. But the particular parent that I had talked to had intentionally completely reorganized her schedule that she could drop the kid off and pick the kid up, so there wasn't going to be any impact outside of that. So I'm very afraid that stuff like this is not treating the kid as the individual. The school district has staff willing to work hard and willing to do extra, and, you know, parents are willing to do this, and the decision should not be moved away from the actual teachers who are wanting to do the help.
Okay. Maybe if, Ms. Crasko, we could get some clarity on the topic, because I know you and I have had, well, Mr. Hackett and I have had several email discussions, but you and I have had several discussions as well regarding meeting the needs of all of the students, so if we could get an update on that. I think I saw a couple of hands, Ms. Dominique, and then Mr. Jerome.
Mr. Hackett, I kind of want to know.
Turn on your mic.
I did.
Oh, can you pull it closer?
Okay.
There you go.
All right. This class that you all were giving, it was only in the mornings? The kids couldn't come in the afternoon?
I'm positive we would, because they're middle schools, their school schedule starts later than high school, so for about the last 15 years working at Lathrop, most of the advanced kids who want to come over to take a geometry that's not offered, say, in middle school, will come over in the morning, so it doesn't impact their middle school schedule. Now, sometimes it does, and it has, it impacted my daughters, and in order to deal with that, basically, me as a parent communicated with the English teacher who is the schedule that is impacting, and it worked out just fine.
Does, I'm sorry, let me just have one follow. Does the student have to be advanced math? Could it be a student that's kind of like borderline and?
That's an interesting question. I would tell you that when we talk as a math department, and forgive me that I'm speaking for the math department, I'm not the math department head, but we've had this communication or this conversation repeatedly, and the math department is very united in terms of wanting to teach kids math and willing. So last year, when I had 45 kids in an algebra class, I was more than willing to take one more. I mean, 45 versus 46 isn't relevant if it helps that one kid who needed it. And if the kid wanted an actual teacher as opposed to Apex Learning, I'm willing to teach it, I'm willing to do the extra work. I just don't like being prevented from helping people. You know, the policy, I don't understand the logic of the policy, and I wanted you to listen to their justification for it, because I've heard enrollment, but the math teachers are willing to deal with it. I've heard equity, and the argument over equity comes from teaching and learning, saying that only the Barnett and Ryan kids can take advantage of this, you know, because of their proximity, and therefore, it creates some type of inequity issue across the district. So I've heard that argument, and then I've heard a money argument before, and then being outside the class, you know, which is, which is a very valid issue, but again, having the teacher and the parents communicating back and forth, and the system's not broken, it's working, it's worked for my 15 years, and I suspect before me was Nan Warham, and I suspect it worked for the 10 years she was there before me. So it's a shame that we've turned, we've turned away two kids.
Mr. Jerome?
I just want to first say thank you for bringing this to our attention, and speaking from the student perspective of, I know a couple of students that did take advantage of that in taking geometry, and it really helps put them on track for the college prep track in high school, which is one that any student that has the advantage to take advantage of, any students that has the opportunity to take advantage of, I think that we owe it to them to let them take advantage of that, and so, thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you. Now that I think about it, I'm not sure I answered Wendy's question. It's usually in the morning, but I'm positive we would take anybody, if it worked out for some homeschool parent, to come in fifth period or whatever. I mean, there's not a lot of the kids who, who come, and, you know, we, we want to help as, as teachers, and I just don't imagine our department would, would get in the way of that at all.
Thank you, Mr. Hackett, and Ms. Crasko will get us an update on, I know that at one of the schools you talked about, and I think maybe two of them, that they were able to do, to offer the advanced math courses within the building because of the highly-qualified staff that were in the building. Obviously, that can change from year to year, so.
The parent that I've talked to was put on Apex Learning, and.
Right.
The justification was there was a highly-qualified math person in the building, so it was the student's responsibility to come in on their own and get the help they needed, not the same as, as being. not the same as being in a classroom.
And I would encourage those parents to reach out to building principals, because that also, I think, they should be a part of that discussion. And then we'll also get a follow-up from Ms. Crasko on how this has been addressed. So thank you for sharing your concerns this evening.
Good.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
I don't have anyone else signed up. Would anyone else like to come forward and testify? Okay, seeing none. Public testimony is closed. We'll move to our information and reports. And we have the honor this evening of having Shelley Wade, principal, owner of Agnew Beck Consulting, and member of the Arcadius Project Team, will present information from the Fairbanks North Starborough Ileson Regional Growth Plan. District staff provided data and participated in multiple community stakeholder meetings. Thank you to Jeff Stepp, Special Assistant to the Mayor, for his ongoing collaboration with Superintendent Dr. Gaboric throughout the process. Information from the growth management plan will inform district decisions regarding the future of facilities and program delivery. Welcome.
Thank you.
I'll real turn it over to you.
Okay, great. So I'm using this handy cordless microphone. Can everybody hear me okay? Okay, great. And in part, I wanted that so I could see you folks too, because you are equally important to our school board members. So thank you so much for the opportunity to present. Yeah, my name is Shelley Wade, and I'm a proud graduate of North Pole High School, class of 1988. Go Patriots! So just wanted to give you just a little bit more context. So this is a project that is funded by the U.S. Department of Defense Office of Economic Adjustment. It is a project that we've been working on through a contract with the Fairbanks North Starborough School District, and I'm part of the Agnew Beck Arcadius Project Team. And here to present and be very focused in a short 10-minute timeframe to hit the highlights of a 400-page document that you'd be excited to explore on our website, which I'm going to share, which is actually in the agenda and the meeting packet, but I'll share that at the very end of my presentation as well. So I also wanted to thank the Mayor's Office, and then, most importantly, I really wanted to thank Superintendent Gaboric and your staff for all of your assistance in providing direct information to our team to provide as accurate as possible analysis, which we know those numbers are changing on a daily basis, and so we're going to talk a little bit about that this evening. And then I also wanted to say thank you to Colonel Bonduran and your staff for all of the information that the Air Force has provided us, again, to create the most accurate picture. So just in short, the growth plan really covers not just education and early childhood development, but a whole suite of topics that are important to residents of this community that are thinking about these 3,300 new folks coming to your community. How is that really going to impact you folks? And how are you going to meet their needs and really address these potential gaps in each of these areas? So 400 pages is actually pretty conservative for really a plan that has to cover a lot of territory. And I'll add that as we've been going through this process, I think as the school district has realized, and any number of stakeholders in each of these areas, this has been an opportunity to also realize what data is missing in the community today and what information that you would like to know more about. So I will have to see, this growth plan is 400 pages, but does not cover every single piece of information. So there's a lot more to learn. This is the process we started way back in June of actually last year and released the plan, the draft plan, at the end of July. Hopefully, you provided your comments on the draft plan. We're just about there. We have been going through this revision process, and we should be ready to release the final plan here very soon, within the next couple of weeks. So the information that I think has been most valuable for folks to see, a quick snapshot, is really when are folks arriving in the community? So when are the F-35 active-duty personnel and other technical consultants and personnel? When are those folks arriving? And with them come their dependents or their families. So you can see calendar year by calendar year, that really in calendar year 20, 21, and 22 is really the bulk of when folks are coming, in particular, in 20 and 21. So that, of course, is important as we're thinking about the school district's planning and looking at the capacity of how schools can really address the needs of that incoming population. If you've been to any of our presentations, you've seen this graphic a number of times, which says, given what we know about how the population has changed over the last several decades, so information and numbers that we know, what can we say about a projected population moving forward out through 2030, given what we know, at least theoretically, about what economic changes are happening, and especially what kind of bigger impacts the F-35 population will have on the Fairbanks community? So this tells you that it's about a 5.4% over or above what normally would have happened without the F-35 population. Or if it's easier for you to think about it in these terms, about 5,600 new people. So without the F-35s, 5,600 less folks. So this is important, again, because we're thinking about how do we best plan for these new folks as they come to the community and this changing population. And then I think it's important, before we get into the education-specific numbers, is to understand that this is an economic opportunity for the community, and with the F-35s comes a number of job opportunities and business opportunities. And so what you can see here is projecting out to 2030, this is an additional approximately 3,300 jobs on top of what would have happened without the F-35s. So that is employment for Fairbanks residents that either currently are unemployed or seeking employment. And then you can see that big chunk of high activity in 2022, when we're really looking at big construction projects happening on Ileson that will employ Fairbanks companies and Fairbanks individuals. So the reason I'm going to start out with housing is because we know that this has been one of the largest topics in this conversation about how do we meet the needs? Is there a big gap with housing or not? And here's what we can tell you. And this is really important for folks to understand as the backdrop for when we start to talk about schools. We know that basically, there's adequate supply to meet the housing needs of these 3,300 new folks. However, what the Air Force has shared with us is about 85% of the folks that live off base, those active-duty personnel, about 85% of those folks live in the 99705 area. 99705 is what area?
North Pole.
Thank you. Okay. I wanted to be a teacher. I should have been a teacher, maybe. Okay. So knowing that, we wanted to take a closer look at the 99705 area and really understand, okay, what gap is there potentially in housing in the 99705 area? And it turns out, there is a gap. So there's been a trend of construction of about 70 new units per year in 99705. That's not going to cut it. To be able to meet the needs of those new families coming in that will mostly live in 99705, we've got to build an additional 183 units on top of that. So I'll just end this housing piece here and get right to the nitty-gritty, which is the school-specific info. But I should tell you that we've launched a parallel effort. I was just up last week and facilitated a meeting of a housing task force. So that's a group of folks that are lenders, builders, community leaders. We had the mayors in the room, so folks that are really interested, Coal Climate Housing Research Center. How do we meet this housing need? Because housing and education are really those drivers for those active-duty personnel and those families that are making decisions about where to live and where to send their kids to school. So education is a primary focus, and I just wanted to share a quick quote from one of the folks that we interviewed as part of some focus groups that we did on base in October of 2017. I can't believe it's going to be almost a year now. But when deciding where to live, we look at the quality of the schools nearby and the availability of after-school activities. So we've seen this, not just with this one group of folks that we talked to, but we know that nationwide, active-duty personnel are making decisions on where they live based on the quality of the schools. So what can we say, remember, we looked at those population numbers? What can we say specifically about those folks that are 17 and under? So this gives us preliminary population projections for children or folks 17 and under, and this gives this to you in age brackets. So you can begin to see, relative to the baseline, you would have an increase of 1,900 new 17 and under residents or school-aged kids. So that's a total population of 30,705. So this is just really telling us the difference between without the F-35s and with the F-35 families. Here is the change that we're projecting out through 2030, and you can see where those different age ranges are. And they're predominantly mostly in the elementary school age range, and so that's not surprising, as we have a lot of young families that come as part of our active-duty personnel, new population. So just a little bit more on what is it that these new personnel and families are looking for and factors that they're considering when they select a school? They're looking for schools that can provide supports to military families specifically. They're looking at the performance of those schools, the location of those schools, how big are the classrooms, how many kids in the classroom, what are the recreational or the sport opportunities or after-school programming, what are the crime rates in that area? So these are just some of the factors that go into the decision-making as an active-duty personnel parent is saying, okay, where will my kids go to school? Where are we going to live? We also did ask, how satisfied are you, or what concerns or maybe positive things do you have to say about the school district? And we did hear that there is some desire to have teachers that have more training about what is it to be a military family, how to connect with military families, what are military family needs, after-school programming, a desire for more after-school programming, but parents generally feeling satisfied with elementary schools. And then we heard some mixed results about the middle and high schools, and I think that was mostly about, maybe even similar to one of the topics the gentleman was talking about earlier, and that's the desire for advanced or excelled programming, so at the high schools especially. So we showed you those numbers and that new group of 17 and under kids coming to the school district. What we know, at least from these numbers, again, this is a little bit older information now already, 2016, 2017 school year, based on total facility capacity. At a district level, you could say that the school district could absorb or take on this new population. So for those 1,922 population by 2030, that the school district could take on that population. But what I mentioned earlier, the 85% of folks live in what area?
North Pole.
Yeah. I just wanted to hear North Pole a lot of times tonight. So it is. It's true. So we have to drill down even further, because this picture looks pretty good until you look a little bit closer. And again, we're looking at 2016, 2017 numbers and a little bit earlier. But here's where you start to see some of those schools that are on or near base, they're approaching capacity, especially the elementary schools. Midnight Sun Elementary, I'm looking at, North Pole Elementary. But in contrast, the on-base schools have some capacity, so there's some room there, it looks like, potentially. And then you see off-base, where the North Pole Middle Schools getting closer to the capacity. North Pole High School's still a little bit of capacity, but then you see Ben Ileson seems to be right about 50%, or has some ability to take on some additional students. Now, I'm going to show you something that's going to make your eyes cross, because, and I'm excited to share this, and this is actually in much more detail in the full regional growth plan. But we broke it down school by school and tried to understand, looking at the elementary schools, by 2024, we're already not going to be able to meet capacity, at least what we're projecting for these, again, these subset of schools. This is not looking at all Fairbanks, North Starborough School District schools. This is looking at just those 99705 specific schools, right? So we see with the elementary schools and with the middle schools that we're starting to reach a place where potentially, we would not have the capacity to take on these new 17 and under school-aged kids. And it gets a little bit worse for the middle schools as you get further out to 2030. The high schools, we see capacity 2024 and all the way out to 2030. So again, the focus becomes more on those elementary school and even middle-aged school or middle school capacity numbers. So I'm just about through my slides, because I'm excited to hear the school board members give their input. But one of the important factors that I needed to share tonight is, in addition to those capacity numbers, is also the fiscal impacts or the dollars and cents part of this whole equation. And so just wanted to share, start this conversation by saying, this is what we understand about the breakdown of funding per student. So if you say $15,019 per student in 2016, you can see those numbers broken down by State of Alaska funding from the borough, and then percentages from federal impact aid money, which is money that is provided to federally connected, for federally connected students. So the reason I share this is because as we look further out in those population projections, you can see where there is a shift, where school-aged children or ages 5 to 17 become a larger proportion or percentage of the total population. And if you're already, you're a person that enjoys math, and you're already starting to think about what is that impact potentially to the school district and to the borough as you're thinking about the financial expenditures for those new students or growing youth population? This tries to, and this is where the fiscal impacts, part of the growth plan and the education piece kind of come together. So you can see for the borough, through 2024, projected general fund revenues exceed the general fund expenditures. So that's both in the forecast where no F-35s and with F-35s. And from 2025 to 2030, then things shift. And the projected expenditures exceed projected revenues. And the reason why, I wanted to make sure that this is really clear for folks, is you have an increased number of school-aged children who do not pay taxes that are a percentage of your total population. So really, the equation sort of shifts. So you have additional young people needing additional services, but you have the same number of people that are paying into the tax base for those educations. So school expenditures for the borough are forecast to grow faster than per capita growth assumed for tax revenues. So this is, again, you know, something to monitor and consider, and we've done that as, a couple slides left for you, as we're thinking about strategies. So part of our job was to recommend a suite of strategies that the school district, in partnership with other, with, of course, the borough, and then with other partners to consider, and of course, with Ileson. And then also, just as I'm learning about what has happened with the enrollment numbers, some information that was shared with me prior to this evening's meeting, that there's also a need for, I think, communication with Colonel Fisher, your shop, and with the Air Forces altogether. This first one, that's about improve information sharing of arrival times, demographics of incoming, not only Air Force, but I would add Army families with children. So that, to the degree that that can be communicated in a consistent and more timely manner and more strategically, there's some ideas and thoughts about how that might happen. And the other strategies that we have here is, you saw those lower numbers for on-base schools, is there an opportunity to populate some of those on-base schools so that you relieve some of that almost at-capacity or what would be over-capacity for off-base schools? Explore options for elementary and middle schools that are anticipated to reach maximum capacity. And you're all thinking, that sounds grand. What do you mean specifically? There's a lot of different ideas for this one. And I know that the school board, you have considered some of these already, is updating your school boundaries to meet changing distribution enrollment needs, and then these other potential strategies, which, some of which I experienced growing up here, you know, being in an unportable classroom, for example, could be a temporary thing, maybe combining middle schools and high schools. So those high schools that have a whole bunch of capacity, they can absorb some of that middle school population. So there's a lot of ideas about how, once you're monitoring and watching those numbers shift, especially as we see that larger portion of the active-duty personnel from the F-35s arrive in 2020, what is happening with the schools as they're absorbing those new kids? And then we have a few other strategies here that are really focused on the funding piece of things and really working closely to both lobby together and then work with your military partners for potential funding and additional military grants, but also advocating for the State of Alaska to maintain or increase their existing levels of funding. And then I will just mention a couple of others. And then I will just mention a couple of others that were, not necessarily less priorities, but we had a couple of strategies that were actually during the focus group presentations, and also in information that we learned about other active duty personnel across the nation, really, this active engagement with parents, with military parents and their families, so increasing their engagement and volunteerism. And then lastly, the last two here are improving bus transportation and then offer before and after childcare programming. So what I, the last thing I'll mention, and then I'll share the website, is that the items that I've identified here and read, if that wasn't clear, these are identified as priorities in the implementation plan, which is the last chapter of the regional growth plan. So we're seeing all of these, as there may be shorter-term action items that need to happen, but there's pretty immediate activity that needs to happen to respond to the F-35 families. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, that we have identified some priorities for immediate or near-term completion within the next three years especially. So I think I've probably gone beyond my 10 minutes, so I will just share as a quick closing. Here is the website where all 400 pages are available to you, and then the education chapter where there is a school-by-school analysis, so if you're a person that came and you were curious to get additional information, that school-by-school analysis is available as well. So that's what I have, and I'm excited to get your feedback, school board members. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wade. As a reminder to the board as well, we have a work session scheduled two weeks from yesterday to discuss what has been presented this evening, and so we can start working to implement things that we need to. So just keep that in the back of your head as we ask our questions this evening, that we'll have an opportunity to really go in-depth at our, at our work session on the, is it the 16th, 15th, is it October 15th? Oh, October, sorry, I was thinking it was in two weeks. October 15th. I was looking at the wrong side. And then I would also encourage not only the public, but any school board members that haven't had an opportunity to look at the regional growth plan, there is an incredible amount of information that's actually pretty amazing, so overwhelming.
And I would say that, that it is going to be, and I'm saying, well, we'll release the final within the next couple of weeks, but folks, this needs to be a continuing, moving train, so as much as you hear the dynamic plan or dynamic kind of document, that terminology, it's really true, especially as we know that the factors are changing, we're getting new information, like enrollment is down by 200-plus students right now. So what does that mean? And let's understand that more clearly and have this dialogue that's really strategy number one, about communicating with our military partners about what does it look like for those families as they're moving in, to the degree that you can be exact, is the question, I think. Thank you.
So question, Mr. Rice, you want to start?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you know, with this many kids coming in right now, you know, it really doesn't show up, but maybe one of the questions we need to keep in the back of our mind is, how many, you know, are in special needs, how many, you know, other classes that we might have to be able to provide for some of these students, what kind of access and stuff like that? So, because that, just looking at how much we're getting, it was just, it's just one of those things where I was just like, wow. You know, I'm working for the city, you know, we're on the other side, you know, and I'm going, okay, you know what, housing, infrastructure, you know, roads, and, okay, I got to do all this, but now I'm seeing this, as a school board member, I'm just like, oh, kids. And how are we going to be able to service them, you know, what services are we going to have to be able to provide for them and stuff like that? So, you know, maybe it's not a question for you, but you know, maybe it's something that we just need to be able to keep in the back of our mind.
I will mention that in the Health and Social Services chapter, if you have not had a chance to look at that section of the growth plan, that actually pediatric therapy needs, so, and then behavioral health needs that are specific to pediatrics or children 17 and under, have been identified as a gap or a potential need for the incoming population, which can be a make or break deal for whether or not a family is able to actually come and fulfill the mission and be a part of the F-35 mission if they're unable to have that care available. Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Jerome, then Ms. Dominique.
So my question was, you mentioned encouraging parents that are off-base to have their students go to on-base schools. What would be the parental obligation for that, and could there be the possibility of having buses for those students?
Yeah, there is. So, and that is part of the transportation component, so, and then understanding what the waiver policy, so there's a whole portion of the growth plan, and in the education chapter where we talk about either the limitations or the possibilities with the waiver program. And so it seems like, yes, there is an opportunity, and there's a strategy or an action that's outlined in the growth plan that really addresses that as a potential means, but we know that there are challenges with both the transportation piece, and then also potentially some inconsistencies with how the waiver program was applied previously. And so there's an opportunity now to reexamine that and reapply it to the benefit of these young people and their families.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Dominique.
Haven't not read your 400-page document yet, so it may be something that you can refer me, show me where I need to go and look this up, but I'm quite sure you did a comparison of what happened when we got the Striker Brigade that came in, and we were expecting an abundance of children going to our schools, and we got a lot of elementary, but we didn't get a whole lot of high school kids. So did someone go back and research what happened with that one, to know what would happen possibly with the Ileson Airmen, make sure I make it right? Because it's, there is a difference, you know? And I know, being a military spouse myself, my son almost didn't come here because of the sports. He was into sports, all my boys are, and I know a lot of families have their kids in sports, and a lot of opportunities, I hate to say this, my kid got an opportunity that was out of this world, he got to pay college tuition and went off to the NFL and all that, but a lot of kids will play sports in the law 48, and they'll have more eyes on them for progression, for free college tuition. So I just kind of want to know if you all looked into those opportunities that kids might be missing by coming here?
Yeah, so that, you've identified what was one of the strategies, and one of the concerns that was voiced by the focus groups. So when we did, we did seven different focus groups with active duty personnel, and that was our recurring theme, so opportunities at the high school level, both in extracurricular activities, but also in programming for advanced courses, so where there might not be a population that warrants, you know, an additional AP class or something that could advance that young person's education and, you know, do the college prep. But to the earlier portion of your question, which is, how did this compare to the work that was done when you looked at the, you know, previous potential military personnel coming to the Fairbanks community? So I think there were a lot of lessons that were learned through that, but I think that, you know, this was our forecast to the best of our ability, given what we know has happened, the information that was provided to us by active duty personnel directly, and then also what we know have been the trends in the Fairbanks area over the last several decades. So those two pieces together gave us this best estimate for where, the age groups and the potential grades for those populations. So this is still feeling like the most informed and most accurate, given the information we've gotten from the Air Force and what we know have been trends, yeah, historical trends.
Mr. Doren.
Hi Julie, thanks for being here, appreciate it. Where I wanted to start was the numbers people anticipated in each of the years, calendar years. As part of the information, does it give some indication of how they might be expected to come, scattered over the course of the year, more in the spring, more in the fall? And the reason I ask that is that, for instance, take calendar year 20, where we have 450, 500 potential coming, well, actually, 1,000 people more coming. That could impact us in school year 1920, if they were coming in the spring, and we'd have to plan for that next year, or it could be the following year. Do we have any sense of how that's going to be spread out, or it's totally up in the air?
Not exactly up in the air, but, so I will say Colonel Bondurant, that we never did get, you know, an exact science month arrival time. So this was the best guess for when those, but I understand, and we do actually indicate it in the regional growth plan, that this is certainly a factor, especially for the school districts as you're planning for your future school districts. I don't know if you had any?
Yeah, I'll just say, I mean, it's absolutely a consideration for our military families, because we do understand that they, you know, it's a challenge to them to get them enrolled in school in a timely manner. So we typically have two to three main PCS cycles a year, the fall, the spring, and the summer, and typically, you know, military members with kids in school, they're going to try to get that summer PCS cycle, which is when the majority of our folks do move, but it's always a challenge. And so looking at it now, just like you mentioned, Tim, is a smart way to try to manage it as best we can.
Yeah, so this almost, you know, daily dialogue about what does that look like for better planning purposes seems really important.
So it does become kind of our, part of our budget planning piece for this coming spring, to be ready for the next year, your impacts there, okay. And then in terms of the growth that we're talking about, it's pretty much even from 22 to 30, right? That's at Ileson.
We're talking about for 17 and under, or for?
Total population.
Yeah, gotcha.
And we know that both of them go hand in hand and impact things. And there, if I got the numbers correctly, we're expecting about 3,300 new personnel plus dependents at Ileson, about 2,300 new job opportunities, et cetera. So does that include or factor in dependents that might come with people who are coming for those jobs in the general population?
Yeah, so maybe just a slight correction on the employment piece. So by 2022, 4,200 additional jobs on top of what you would have had baseline, so without the F-35s. That number gets smaller as we go up to 2030 logically, because all the construction, the big activities happen during those early years while everybody's coming in their building and getting ready. And then to the second part of your question, Tim, I think is that the 3,300 number is included in this larger population projection, and is, what's also included is out migration and in migration. So whatever that is comprised of, which could include folks that are not military, that come to the Fairbanks area seeking employment, see this as an opportunity for a job. There's great things happening in the Fairbanks, North Starborough, I'm headed there from Anchorage, or from Kenai, or whatever the case may be.
With dependents and everything included in that.
Yep, and that's what we would call the induced population, if you want to get into the nitty-gritty about that additional population on top of the active duty personnel and their families. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Bartels.
So Ms. Wade, I really appreciate this Agnew Beck report, as well as the whole Arcadia Project team and all the efforts. I mean, these are exciting, these are exciting issues, and I can, being part of the public conversation going back, I don't know, five years when we were in the final 20, and then it got down to the final five. I mean, what an awesome opportunity for the interior, and I just, I think that your work and everything else bringing to realization is very helpful, especially as we start projecting out budgets and things of this nature. So there's a question in there, I'll get to it, but the one thing that I, and I don't know if it, maybe Dr. DeBorick directed this to you, and that's the generally speaking comment about the federal impact aid, and how it's affected for students that are living off-base and students that live on-base, because that's a significant difference in numbers. Is the $7,600 for students that live on-base accurate with regards to if a student lives off-base?
I think that's pretty close, yeah.
It is.
I think that's the last year's number, can you go ahead?
So has anybody heard of payment in lieu of taxes?
Hilton.
Hilton, you got it. So this is essentially what this is. So this is property tax, if you will, that that family would be paying were they to live off-base and pay property tax. So because they're living on-base, they're not paying property tax, so the federal government says, we understand that, we get that, you're not getting the dollars that you would get from a family living off-base paying property tax, so we're going to give you that $7,600 as payment in lieu of a property tax that we would otherwise pay for that student. So that is, that is accurate. Did I get that right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So, which leads, which is perfect answer, because I figured that was the case with regards to how I understood it too.
Yeah.
And so I don't know if there's a program out there, especially with such a heavy lift from the community, and our, our community, our interior is going to, this is, it's going to happen, obviously, and it's going to be, we want to make it as prosperous for all for the final mission, and that's getting the F-35s in and fully operating. But is there any type of reprieve, even if it's a initial grants, for something as large as this, for such a small community that we're aware of, or maybe Colonel Bondurant, if there's something that you're aware of that falls in line with that, specifically? Okay.
So I can make that in part.
Ms. Wade?
Yeah, hi. So there is the same Department of Defense entity, the Office of Economic Adjustment, does have actually a tremendous, I don't know what to call it, really a chest of funds that are available to communities that are military communities that are making these types of transitions. So we're looking at this actually currently, so in parallel with this process, I'm also working on, as a contract for the Borough, the Sulcha Badger Road area plan, anybody heard of that effort? Once again, so remember 99705, so let's dive in deeper and understand Sulcha Badger and do the deeper dive there, and part of that is actually with the housing and other pieces, is to go back to the Office of Economic Adjustment and say, what resources are there that could assist with some of this transitional planning? So that's predominantly planning, but we do know that there is a parallel effort to also fund an independent authority. So this is a longer process, I'm not actually up on the latest, but this would be infrastructure grants, so facilities, like real capital projects that could meet the needs of military communities. So I think the short answer is yes, but what those are exactly is part of the implementation piece and really worth further exploring. We've identified some of those resources actually in the implementation plan, but there's more work to do there.
So Ms. Wade, I'm sure you've probably already thought about this, but I'll, in case it's leading into our next presenter, but you know, part of the capital, I mean, obviously our inventory is on-base, and getting students on-base that obviously are not living on-base requires busing, which obviously that's a, you know, 6% of our total funds that we spend, you know, is, you know, $15 million, I mean, there's, there's a high probability that that could go up. So obviously, it's not necessarily a capital, because we're not providing buses, but there is a real cost associated to that, just something, I don't know if it works into your research, but it would be definitely something that we could use in some further discussion. So I'll end with, I just appreciate the whole presentation and the multipliers, and obviously there's a focus on this, is the young families coming to the interior, we want to support them because they're going to be out and about, and they bring kids, and it's exciting times, but not only the report brought the facts, but it also brought some concerns with potential solutions. So I appreciated that, and I look forward to the October 15th work session. I hope Colonel Bondurant and Colonel Fisher can help us, because maybe you've been exposed to this before in your career, so, thank you.
Mr. Doren.
Going to your capacity of the schools.
Yeah.
The particular schools, um, that one, nope, next one down. Yep. Just for clarity, and as you said, this is a chart that can be an eye-crosser.
Yeah, I tried to actually correct it a little bit before I got here so it wouldn't be as crazy, but I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. So the number is under twenty-twenty-four versus the number is under twenty-thirty.
Yes.
When we talk about valuable capacity, like those numbers are the same in both columns, we're not really looking at the difference between, okay, so like on the elementary, it's five-hundred-and-six in each one.
Right.
It's the same.
That's going to stay the same unless you expand your facilities, yes.
Right. So, and, and the projection of people coming or kids coming in that, in the elementary, for instance, is basically going to stay status quo.
It changes, that's at the top. So the population, uh, predicted population increase, you can see at the very top there at six-twenty-seven and six-twelve.
Right. So they're basically, you know.
It's similar, yes.
And, and so that available capacity is really, it's really a duplicate in lots of ways.
The, the available capacity is the five-oh-six number. So those are duplicated unless you were to, for example, expand those facilities and all of a sudden you have, you know, another building on North Pole Elementary School and you have capacity for an additional thirty kids or something.
Yeah.
But otherwise, those numbers, you're correct, those numbers stay the same. And what changes slightly is the, um, population increase or it actually decreases as you get closer to two thousand thirty, yes.
Right, and there's an increase in middle and high, assuming those kids continue on.
Yes.
Basically. And, and so it's really the increase where double counting numbers there in some ways. So that, that's clarifying, actually, thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Because.
Yeah.
Yeah. One, uh, going to strategy nine, um, on the bus transportation that you referenced, is that school bus transportation or community municipality?
School bus transportation, but, um, thank you for asking that question because in the transportation chapter, we've identified actually transportation or transit, some form of transit to and from, uh, Ileson Air Force Base to North Pole or Ileson into Fairbanks as a need. There used to be the, was the black, what was it called? Yes.
I didn't know what it was. It had lots of nicknames, I think.
I actually have this right at the tip of my tongue, but I don't. But, um, it was underutilized, an underutilized program. And so it seems like there's an opportunity to reinstate that and do potentially better communication with active duty personnel that would be interested. But yes, this was focused on school bus transportation.
Okay. All right. Okay, and, and then when also, one of the strategies about exploring another middle school, and I know several years ago, and this is a conversation that the district would have been part of too, uh, but as you're talking with the borough, uh, there was a time, um, some serious consideration given to, uh, acquiring a piece of property and this might head out to your other Sulcher, uh, Badger Road type of thing.
Yeah.
But acquiring a piece of property for future construction. How has that played in this conversation or has it been dropped?
It's, no, it's an ongoing part of the discussion. So I think these, um, one, two, three, four bullets really are all about the work session that you're going to have in the middle of October and thinking about what are both the short and the longer term strategies as you have a better sense of what those population shifts will look like? Which of the combinations of these makes the most sense? And yes, the idea of potentially building a new school has been part of the Sulcha Badger Working Group conversation. And Heather, are you here this evening? Heather, Heather's actually on our, as school board representative, she's been, uh, helping keep us informed of the school board's conversation as a part of that Sulcha Badger Working Group. So it's a consideration, but there's no, uh, decisions made. So it's just information about what are the different iterations of strategies that could be implemented to and from the low-cost version to the potentially higher-cost versions of addressing that population change.
Okay, so it's, okay. All right, I'm just thinking that it sounds that there hasn't been much furtherance of the borough conversation because North Pole schools have been at near capacity for quite a while and it's still about.
Well, but then you also have on-base schools that have capacity. So, uh, are, you know, can we address that piece first before building a new school? So I think it's, you know, ongoing conversation, yeah.
And, and my last question on this is in terms of, um, and I appreciated the explanation of why the expenditures will exceed revenues.
Yeah.
Or we project, um, in you, in the report, it does reference, um, the state of Alaska does conversation also, uh, in those strategies about the borough support.
Yes.
For the plans since they are also a significant funder.
Yes.
But will perhaps have less money.
Exactly. Yeah. And I was trying to figure, find where that was here, but we say it specifically is that strategy number five is, you know, maintaining or exi- or increasing existing levels of education funding, uh, while doing these other things in parallel.
Right, and I, and I guess that strategy means to increase, but state and borough is either.
Yeah.
And, and the very last one is, um, with the final coming up, and you've mentioned it here a couple of times, some of these figures are out of date. Will that be updated, uh, at least to last year's information versus two years ago?
This is a, um, a consideration for the borough and for the school district really. So if this is, um, information that is proving to be useful in your planning and that you want to do a continued update, I think it would be a gr- a good, it is not part of our contract dollars.
Okay, I mean.
But it has to be a part of the implementation.
Okay, I mean, in the, the final of.
The final will not be updated.
Instead of using two thousand sixteen information.
It will not.
We might get a little closer, we will not.
It will not because we, it was a, um, as you can imagine, um, we could update it probably every week or every month. So we did to the best of our ability with the information that we had, um, at the time the full draft was developed. So that is certainly has to be a part of the community's continued conversation about implementation.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
And I was just going to throw out a reminder because some of our discussion in the spring when we approved, um, the new charter school, um, was around the cost and how it's going to impact our budget. And just as a reminder that that's also, um, a hundred and thirty or, I can't remember what the number was. It was over, I think it was around a hundred or just over a hundred more seats, K through eight, um, that. And then if they have the, so hopefully they're following the conversation as well.
Yeah.
And planning appropriately, um, because I know one of the things that we talked about a lot, um, with the charter when we met with them was, um, having the ability to expand. And so hopefully they're following this conversation because that's.
They did get in touch with us.
Good, because that's, um, I think a, an important piece to helping, um, relieve some of that was, um, that, we had that knowledge as well that, well, this can relieve a little bit of the stress that, um, that the district will see, so. So I'm wondering, I didn't, uh, ask you this ahead of time, so I'm putting you on the spot, um, if the board has, you know, over the next, for those who haven't had a chance to read the education and even the social services, um, pieces, some of the pieces that, um, I feel like there was one more section that was really, um, oh, housing, is really relevant to our discussion next month. If there are questions, could we funnel them through Dr. Gaboric and then maybe around the first of October, she could send you if we have any specific questions around this presentation that we think of after? Would that be appropriate?
The most appropriate thing would be to get in touch with.
What?
Special Assistant.
You have. Okay, do it through.
Not, not here this evening.
Okay.
So we're continuing our thread of work on Sulcha Badger specifically and definitely have to be dialed into the education conversation, but officially.
Okay.
Go off.
Perfect.
Yeah.
So I would ask board members that over the next month, um, digest, uh, the presentation that we had tonight, pieces of the growth plan that we, uh, that folks haven't had a chance to read. And then if we have questions, um, if you send them directly to, uh, Mr. Step, please copy Dr. Gaboric so she has that information, uh, or send them to her and then she could send one email would actually probably be really beneficial. I didn't ask her either if this was okay, so she might be telling me it's not okay.
No, no. I just had a comment when you're done.
Yeah, no, I, I just, I think it's important that everyone take the opportunity over the next month or so to really digest this information and think about how we're going to dive into these different, um, strategies because it's great, um, it's a great problem to have, but it is a problem that we need to solve. But it's great that we have some strategies to work off of, so. Dr. Gabor.
And I just wanted to thank, um, Colonel Bondurant who came in this summer and we had a specific conversation about this, um, as he and I looked at, I guess it was probably Shelley's last presentation at Chamber in June, I think. And so, um, and I think our challenge is going to be, you know, the district picture and the North Pole picture, which, um, Shelley's done a great job of painting here and it's going to be about moving kids. That's what we're going to be looking at is how do we move kids to schools where we have capacity? So, um, which, just to remind everybody, Mr. Bartels asked for a study about, you know, a school closure because at one point, what, over a year ago now, that's what we were concerned about. And then this, um, project was being done and we hopped on it. And so anyway, I just am very appreciative of, um, Shelley and Agnew Beck and being willing and Jeff Step and the borough being willing to include the district in this conversation and process that's been huge. So, um, much more thorough of a job, I think, than, um, I know of anybody who would have been able to do, um, you know, locally, so thanks.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
And now we will move to our transportation update. And although I didn't read it like our last presentation, uh, this is related to our goal and objective around effective communication, establishing relevant, inclusive and consistent two-way communication to enable, encourage student, parent, staff and community connectedness with the district and inque- increase the diversity of voices within the district. Ryan Hinton, Transportation Director, will provide a transportation update on the start of the school year. And I can give you a minute to, are you gonna, you're just going to present? I didn't know if you had a.
Just going to present, ma'am.
Okay, perfect. The floor is yours.
Good evening, y'all. We are off to a much stronger start this school year, um, and, uh, we still have, uh, quite a few things to work on, but, uh, to, uh, I think, uh, today really just typified kind of where we're at. The, uh, coming in off a long holiday, um, the first school day during move season typically is really a, uh, really bad day. I was kind of dreading it. We had sixteen combined routes this time last year. Today, we did not. We had, uh, we had one combined route in the afternoon. So, yeah, like I said, it kind of exemplifies where we're at. We still have some areas to work on, we still got some stuff to do, but we are in a much stronger position than we were last year. A lot of that is due to like the hard work of our schedulers and, uh, Logan, his team over at First Student. Our, uh, our schedulers worked really hard this summer, um, really just revamping our, uh, regular education bus schedule. So what we did was created these, uh, we're calling them mirrored routes so that students are on the, uh, the same route morning and afternoon. So the same bus that's going to that school in that neighborhood in the morning is doing it in the afternoon. It reduces confusion in the loading zone, it gives the student more consistency with the same bus driver, um, and we anticipate that it's really going to help out when we have alternate stop events. To do that, our schedulers went through over four hundred bus runs, um, comprised of over seven thousand bus stops and fourteen thousand six hundred and ninety miles of route. To put that in perspective, that's the equivalent of driving from here to the Panama Canal and back every day. So they, uh, they really worked hard this summer and to put this together and, uh, the feedback we're getting so far about these routes is, it is, uh, is an improvement. So, uh, let me have my hats off to our schedulers, they just did a phenomenal job. The, uh, leading up to, uh, the school year starting off, um, we'd conducted, uh, full-scale rehearsals of transportation operations on nine August. That included us, uh, like, we, we ran all the routes during their normally scheduled time, uh, went through all the processes minus, um, a couple of them like sending out late bus notifications because we didn't want to confuse people by sending them random late bus notifications two weeks before school started. But, um, we conducted a, uh, an after-action review of it the following day. We went process by process identifying what we needed to improve on before the start of school, route by route and just, uh, really drilling down to, um, like there's things that have traditionally been a hiccup for us on the first day of school that we're, we're finding out or have been a stumbling block for us. We got a lot of great feedback from our drivers, um, as they've looked through these routes, um, that the schedulers put together, giving us, uh, uh, more efficient ways to do them. So they did, they did a phenomenal job. It was a lot of hard work from Logan and his team, um, just really evaluating our process and I think it really did pay off for our first day of school. So our current driver coverage, uh, we are at a hundred and forty-nine drivers out of a hundred and fifty-one. The a hundred and fifty-one number, that's with the ten percent standby ratio. So as drivers get, uh, they get sick or for whatever reason they have to call out, that's why we have that ten percent standby in the contract. We're not at a hundred percent staffing, but we're, we're a lot closer than we were this time last year, um, when, uh, Logan made that boast that we were going to be here, uh, back in the spring. I'll be honest, I was a little skeptical, but he fed me some crow. And I'm very pleased and I'll ask for seconds on that. Like, um, so the, uh, they've actually increased their, uh, their, their staffing levels, um, for what their staffing capacities will be. They've increased the, uh, the number of standby positions they're offering above what the contract calls for. So they are taking proactive steps and they are continuing to, uh, to recruit, they have drivers in training right now and they have their training pipeline open. They're, they, we have their assurance that they're going to continue to, to train drivers and to continue to onboard drivers to, to keep those numbers up and to try to shoot for over that hundred and fifty-one mark for, uh, our hundred percent. So road construction has impacted, impacted our routes, uh, during the start of school. As, and it's impacted everybody with, uh, but we would, I would like to, uh, give a big shout out to the, uh, Department of Transportation and their contractors. They've been very proactive in communicating with us, um, and letting us know what those, uh, impacts are going to be to our buses. And they've also been doing their best to try to mitigate those impacts and keep our buses, um, moving on time. They've asked for bus schedules, um, we've even had instances of them passing out route seats to affected families. So like, we really do appreciate their partnership and, uh, their efforts to try to keep our buses moving on time. So we still have quite a few areas to improve on, one of which is the late bus notification system. It, uh, it has improved over, um, last year, but we still are getting reports that, uh, from parents and from schools that they aren't getting the, uh, they either, they either aren't getting the notification or they're getting the information, but it's inaccurate or it's too late to be useful. So, um, it is, it is an improvement objective that we identified in First Student's annual evaluation last year. We're going to continue to work on it. There has been improvement, but it's still not a, uh, it's not a finished product yet. We, we gotta continue to get it there. One of the best ways to fix the late bus notification system is to fix the root problem, which is the late bus. So we're, uh, we are focusing on drilling down and finding out what is causing these buses to be late. And that's where the, uh, the communication really has improved between First Student and the district as far as communicating, getting feedback from the drivers on what's causing these routes to be late and what's going wrong with the schedule. Is it, is it just a construction issue or is there like something we didn't see in our planning factors that's causing this route to be late? And we did, uh, uh, over the course of rerouting four hundred bus runs, there were a couple errors made on our part where we looked at it and said, okay, well, that's, and we really appreciate those drivers who were like, you can't do a hill that way. And I was like, okay, that makes sense. Thank you. So we are working on that. The, uh, we've got most of those incidents identified, we've got most of those errors fixed, um, but the, uh, we're still finding a couple of them. I think we identified one, uh, late last week. With, uh, the, uh, route change notifications being at the beginning of the year as parents called add-in stops, um, as we get that feedback from the drivers about the route, the timing of the routes and we adjust things, we do see routes change a little bit more dramatically. we do see routes change a little bit more dramatically during the beginning of the year. So, it does change the stop times a little bit more dramatically than it does during the regular course of the year. We did have an issue with that last week about the, about parents getting the notification, about the stop being changed. So, we identified that that was a problem, spoke with First Student about it, and they, they owned it. They said, hey, we're going to get it fixed, and we did not see that problem again today. We don't expect to see it again, but it was one of those, those issues that went overlooked because we didn't anticipate that during our rehearsals about notifying parents of, okay, well, here's your route. Getting used to it for the first week, okay, now it's going to change 10 minutes or so for the next week. So, we do have that issue fixed, resolved now, and we don't anticipate it being an issue later on this year. And then, do acknowledge that the, I believe y'all heard testimony on it last week or two weeks ago about the walk zones being an issue. We are currently looking into that. We know it's a point of concern for many parents, we're developing courses of action and identifying what resources are going to be required to provide options to those families. And it's something we are looking into. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Hinton. Is there any public comment on the report? Casey Nuno, go to the board for questions and comments, Ms. McConnell.
Thank you for the report. You mentioned the improvement objections, objection, objections, objectives, if I can speak right tonight. What kind of deadline do you have for those? I'm assuming it's sooner than later, but you just mentioned you're working on them.
So, the improvement objectives are part of First Student's annual evaluation. So, it's things we identified during the 2017, 2018 school year. We identified six of them that they needed to improve on during the course of the school year that will be reevaluated during their annual evaluation for the, in the 2018, 2019 evaluation.
When you talked about the walk zones, you did mention that, you know, we heard testimony at our last school board meeting about that, concerns from parents in the downtown area having to walk that distance. And you mentioned in your report that you are developing a course of action and identifying some resources to handle that issue, but when is that going to be done? Because as we mentioned before, some of us are very concerned about students walking in the colds the winter months come upon us.
Yes, ma'am, I don't have a timeline for you at this point. We've got a couple of ideas of different things that, we've, we've explored the walking school bus option. The, and we're also just, we're trying to brainstorm other ideas that might be out there for this because for students who don't qualify for regular education transportation under the admin code.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to say I'm glad we're moving forward on improving this service to our students and, and families. And I just want to say kudos to the schedulers too, because that is a major undertaking. And also, I'm really glad to see that representatives are here from First Student.
Thank you, Mr. Dorn.
Ryan, thank you for the report. And again, also, kudos to your department and to First Student. This is certainly a much different report than we've had for the last, actually, couple of years. And so, really pleased with what has happened, what you've got on your list to improve on. And I guess the proof will be in the pudding that we can stay. This is certainly, in some ways, minimum expectation, but it's showing that, that we can stay and, and keep moving up with it. Was interested in the walk zone piece also, you know, concerns have always come up about how far they are and there's the state limits and hazardous routes considerations and stuff like that. So, a lot of times, we can't do very much for those who are in the walk zone. And we say bundle up and, you know, that type of thing. But when you mentioned heightened concern, is this to any understanding? And I know you haven't been here as long with, with that, but is it that we're getting, we are really getting more concerns from it? Or is it, and do we know whether it's newer people coming and say, well, it's, it's 20 above and it's cold because they've come from the south or a warmer part of the country or something like this? Or is it, we really have some real safety issues that, you know, then again, may open up to hazardous routes or what, and what those costs may come to?
So, I guess I need to, you know, put the denim on there that it's, the heightened concern isn't, we have an objectional, objective way of measuring that, hey, yes, there is heightened concern over this. It's more of a, Ryan's subjective feeling that, hey, there's more people who are concerned about it based off of conversation we've had with parents who have been calling in. And it's, it's a mixture of, yeah, it is a mixture of people coming in from the, the lower 48 who aren't used to it and then like they, they hear, like, you know, they haven't experienced the winter yet, but they've heard the horror stories and they're like, oh, negative 60. And they're, they're, yeah, just the worst-case scenario going through their mind. And then you have people who have lived up here and they have students in the, in the, they've had students in the elementary schools that were transported. But now that they're in the middle school, now that they're, they're in a walk zone and now it's becoming a reality for them. And so, we get a little bit of all different kinds of groups that have expressed concern over it.
And are there safety concern, not weather safety concerns, but heightened or increased safety, personal safety, you know, areas where kids have to walk through perhaps less desirable situations? Or do we know?
I wouldn't say that's really changed. It really is, that's not even walk zone specific. We get that even in our, our out-of-town routes when people are concerned that their student has to walk to a bus stop. And usually, that one's centered around wildlife. So, it's not necessarily just like safety in the, in the city. But we, we kind of experience that, not even in walk zones, we experience that on our regular routes, that concern.
The last piece of that is, if we did see that there was a real need and a hazardous route was designated, that's an additional cost to our busing, is that right?
Yes, sir, there would be.
Some adjustment in budget.
Yes, sir, I don't have a figure on what a hazardous route would cost. I know an additional bus route, so for every route that we would have to add, it's about $80,000 a year. And that's before fuel. So, it comes out closer to about $90,000 a year.
Okay, thank you.
Sir.
Ms. Lambert. I just wanted to thank your department, you, Ryan, and First Student for making our lives a little bit easier this year. It's been a breath of fresh air for the start of the school year, as it's been, you know, over the last two or three years. It's been pretty rough and I know you guys have sat up here a couple of times and have heard the same thing over and over. So, I'm glad, you're probably pretty glad you're not sitting up here hearing that again. Just make sure you don't, you know, rest on the laurels and, and keep it up because it's, it's, I thought it was really good at the beginning of this year. I will say on the, the late bus notification, just from a parent, what I've experienced is that it's not in real time. And so, when my kid walks in the door 30 minutes late and then five minutes later I get there, your bus is late by 20 minutes. Like, really? So, you know, that's probably part of the, the problem is that it's just not coming in in real time. And so, parents are, don't, don't know where their kids are. That's just what I've experienced. But I would like to thank you for that wave-your-bus-driver-down week that they had while you're pending, you know, adding an additional stop. So, that was really, really helpful and I hope some people actually took advantage of that because that, that was, that was great for, for my child to do that and it worked really, really well. So, thank you.
Mr. Vartel.
Yes, Mr. Hinton, I, I did owe Ms. Lambert's comments and I just wanted to, you know, there is wildlife downtown too. But I, I want to encourage Logan and First Students and all the efforts that they've made and just really appreciate that. And it just seems like with our Cincinnati-based company who's managing this contract for us that there has to be a, a app out there. And I know we have pockets within our community that are not, it's not going to work just because they don't have coverage. But, but for the, hopefully for the mass population of writing, you know, if Uber and Lyft can do it and I can see six different cars that'll come pick me up, I, I just feel like there's a way we can identify that for real, real-time basis for my school bus. And I just, I want to see technology if we can continue to encourage that. But very thankful for where we're at and the direction that we're going and the new dialogue that we're able to enter into. And want to encourage Mr. Hinton to be there at our October 15th meeting and maybe First Student if there is a seat at the table as well, just because I think that that's going to be a key component to our success with the F-35 transition. So, but thank you for the report.
Mr. Dorn.
I just wanted to say a thank you in terms of what comes through in the report here and evidently been worked in well within the culture of First Student to really utilize the drivers and get feedback from them since they're on the front lines and really see how the plan works out in practice. And I think that's an excellent piece seeing through this. And then, please do thank the drivers for what they do every day for our kids. Their first ones agreed in the morning, last ones at the end of the day. And I know over the years, I really appreciated working with the number of bus drivers that I did and the hard work that they put in and care for the kids. So, please extend that.
Ms. Dominique.
I too would like to thank everyone that worked on the scheduling. You all did a fantastic job on the scheduling this year. But I would like you, if you could, real quickly, what is a hazardous route? Because I came to you last year about, there are times on my road that there are moose out, but I'm quite sure there's a lot of other routes that have moose that come out whenever. And it gets dark and one neighbor was saying that it's, it gets hard in the wintertime for her to have her child walk to the end of the road to catch a bus. So, how do you consider a hazardous route?
So, a hazardous route is identified in Title IV, Chapter 27 of the Alaska Admin Code as a route that is within a 1.5-mile radius of an attendance center. So, what we, the admin code doesn't actually call it a walk zone, but it defines eligibility as that 1.5 miles. So, we, it's easier for parents to conceptualize a walk zone, we call it a walk zone in our admin regs. But within that 1.5-mile walk zone, those areas that are deemed hazardous by the governing body, so y'all, within that walk zone, those, those are the, I guess, the exceptions. So, the, the route that can, can be within 1.5 miles of the attendance center.
Okay, so occasional moose doesn't consider it hazardous?
It wouldn't be a hazardous route and those, so those, what we'd be talking about there would be a route extension and it's covered under a different portion of Chapter 27. But that would be under route extensions and the different criteria. We actually have a really neat flow chart, if anyone was interested, on our website. So, if you go to K12NorthStar.org and click on Families, Bus Information, and then Bus Stop Criteria, we have a really cool flow chart and I say it's really cool because I designed it.
But I think he'll be fine once he gets to high school because the bus stops right in front of their house. He was a high schooler, but he's at elementary school right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Hinton. I made a comment a couple of weeks ago that it, to piggyback off of Ms. Lambert, that it was lovely not to have my phone blowing up on the first day of school with bus issues that parents were concerned about. So, thank you to First Student, thank you to the drivers, thank you to management on both sides. Definitely shows that a team collaborative effort brings success for everybody and that we aren't perfect and we always have room for improvement. But it's showing nice growth in our improvement and our relationships and all of those things. So, thank you to all of you for making those things happen on behalf of our students. Thanks. Next, we have our superintendent and communication report. Our superintendent report is related to our goal and objective around effective communication, and I will turn it over to Dr. Gabor.
Thank you, and it looks like it's almost, it's past 45 already, so I will keep mine short. At the end of our 10-day count, which was last Wednesday, we had 13,377 students. Our projection was 13,743, so down as of that date, 266 kids district-wide. So, I was talking to secondary principals today and the upside is not nearly the class-size pressure that you experience in a year where you're actually hitting targets and people are, you know, working with those numbers. The downside is, you know, at some point, we'll have to reconcile where we're at with funding. Funding is based on the 20-day October count. So, secretaries and other school staff will do cleanup and power school over the next couple of weeks. So, specifically, if they haven't already cleared power school of kids that have not shown up, they'll finish that up in the next couple of weeks. So, then we should see this reconciliation with power school and the hard count. And, yeah, and then we'll just see where we land in October. Typically, again, you look at trend data and it's hard to identify, it's, you know, hard to pinpoint. What I can say is, in the past, when we've been down in the first 10 days, we've also been down in October. If we've been close, there's been a little variance, but if we're significantly down or significantly up, we end up, you know, down or up. So, we'll just keep you informed and updated on that. We're still working on hiring. Again, last year, I think we, we had a, we, I don't know if luck is the right word, but we had a good recruiting year and did not have as many vacancies as we'd started to see. This year, we're back to what many rural districts, you know, we've talked about that, have been experiencing for quite some time in terms of unfilled certified vacancies. And not just in special education where we are often having to work extra hard to fill positions, but in regular education, so still five PE, two science, two social studies, one elementary, a part-time math. So, those are regular education positions not filled right now. So, again, that's, that experience is thus becoming a more real experience for Fairbanks in terms of recruiting. So, and then in ESA, we're down to, if I can read my number, 53 unfilled vacancies. And I think our, sort of our typical range is, you know, between 30 and 50, you know, we, because we have a large ESA workforce and we have a fair amount of turnover there that we're, you were just constantly hiring for ESA. So, and those, those positions range everything from paraprofessionals that work in the classroom to nutrition services to nurses, and so a wide range of ESA positions involved there. So, so those are, yeah, that's the important stuff for tonight, so thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Gabor. Next, old questions, Mr. Dorn.
Thank you, Dr. Gabor, for that. Just two quick things. One, the, if we're down about, you know, I mean, I know it can be give or take. Do we have a ballpark of dollars that, that might be something?
3.2 million is where we're at right now, yeah.
And on the vacancies, I'm assuming we have someone in there at this time?
Subs.
Right. And I'm kind of curious with, you know, we did a lot of advocacy for retire, rehire. Is that playing at all in, in helping us out over the hump here or?
It has, so to answer your first question, yes, for the most part, there's subs. There are some positions, especially with support staff, that it's also difficult to get subs for those positions. So, so no, and there's also, there've been a couple principals who've held combined classes for a while. We've encouraged them to put subs in, so because, you know, then that creates some stress too on the part of parents there. I think there was some hope that, you know, we might get people and that it's just taking longer. And so, anyway, we don't want us, we don't want kids sitting in class at the 45 when we could have a sub. And of course, you know, the balance, the principal's trying to balance, I have a certified teacher versus a sub and how does that work? And it's so PE, that might be doable. We don't have these issues at elementary school, but a social studies class, you know, maybe not the best solution, so. And then the second part of your question was?
Retire, rehire.
Oh, retire, rehire, yes. And so, Claire and I will have a conversation about that tomorrow. And so Claire and I will have a conversation about that tomorrow. Part of that legislation included a resolution that AASB is working on statewide to recommend to school boards, that a resolution be passed that indicates that, yes, we've looked at all the qualified applicants and are going to use this particular tool. So waiting for that as well. I don't know that that's stopping us from outreach. We do have the bona fide separation piece that we just have to watch, so. But in the past, HR, and specifically departments like SED have been pretty proactive recruiting retired folks. So there will be at some point, I think, once AASB, that's the State School Board Association, once they finalize the wording, that'll, they'll send out a recommendation, and then we'll get that in front of you guys so you can pass it. And that was an interesting sort of add to that piece of legislation, so. Anyway, so we'll do that, but.
Great, thanks very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Gaboric. Next, we'll have our monthly communication report. Heather Roundhorse, Executive Director of Communication Development Engagement, will provide the report. Our September topics are included on the agenda, and this is related to our goal and objective around effective communication.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Heather Roundhorse, Executive Director of Communication Development and Engagement, and I'm very excited to be able to give you the first monthly communication report. It was, I can tell that the hard part every month is going to be narrowing down the topics. So since this was our first one, I wanted to focus on back-to-school communication activities. As you know, our department coordinates a variety of community events, such as the upcoming No One Left Behind Awards Banquet for First Responders, volunteer recruitment events, and an annual Partners in Education recognition event. But my personal favorite is the Welcome Back for Educators every fall. So this year, we gave them a red VIP, red carpet experience. We collaborated for months before the event to plan the details and prepare for the big day. We worked with Dr. Gaboric and with Teaching and Learning to provide staff with the event details in a custom webpage. That was new this year. Down in the print shop, we designed and printed Hollywood stars with the names of all the educators who had completed their 20th consecutive year in our district for our Walk of Fame. Our grants and partnership, staff recruited and coordinated positive picketers, and worked with one of our partners in education who generously provided all the donuts. That was a, that was a popular one. We launched a new hashtag for the district at this event, Find Your North Star, to encourage engagement via all the district's social media channels. We decorated Hollywood-themed selfie stations to encourage staff to share their enthusiasm for the new year on Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter. And it was also CDNE staff who was responsible for filming the messages from all the mayors and the union leaders, and producing those videos, creating the teacher-focused pre-show and intermission videos, as well as Dr. Gaboric's slides for the morning. Several of our team were responsible for event photography throughout the day, and two of us were busy recording video of the opening session, which we then were able to upload for district viewers who might not have been able to attend the day. And the other, one of the other items that we were very busy on with back-to-school every year is onboarding and getting the Blackboard Messaging Toolkit. So our suite of Blackboard tools allows us to efficiently target communications to our parents and staff in the channels that they use and according to their preferences. And the beauty of the messaging function is that it allows us to, what Blackboard calls cope, create once, publish everywhere. So we can write a message about, say, a weather-related school delay, and with just a few clicks, send this via text message, phone call, email, tweet, Facebook post, website announcement, and more. This is a great time-saving feature for administrators, and it's absolutely critical in our emergency communications. I'm impressed with the amount of behind-the-scenes work that goes into getting these Blackboard messaging tools to interface successfully with Munis and Power School to ensure that the system is functional at the beginning of every school year. Our point person, Sharice, worked with our friends in the Technology Department to set up for the new year and to ensure the accuracy of information flowing into Blackboard for all the new staff, students, and parents, as well as for those who aren't new but have changed schools or updated their contact information. Just since August 1, 187 messages had been sent, and that's not including the attendance messages. And we do have a test of the Emergency Communications System planned for September 17. We ran a test in the spring, and that was very successful at identifying, you know, people who maybe had changed, you know, updated some information and hadn't quite gotten that in the system yet. And then the last piece that we've been working on particularly hard at the beginning of the school year is the website. Did you know that the district website has over 3,500 individual pages? One of the six recommendations from the 2017 Communications Audit Conduct was to make the, quote, "Make the website communication central." When we hear people asking questions about where is this or that information on the website, that tells us that we are being successful in driving people to the website. We want them, everyone, to expect that the details about any program or public event in the district will be found on the website. Having everyone know that the website is the main communication place means that they aren't searching through email chains, relying on word-of-mouth or social media feeds for key district information. And when we hear that someone can't find something on the website, it helps us identify if information is either missing from a school or a department's page, or if a page is perhaps not organized effectively. And those alerts help us, support us, and help us reinforce our message to the schools and the departments about the importance of well-maintained webpages. Again, I'm amazed by all the work that goes on behind the scenes in both the Technology Department and in our department to maintain the website as a reliable communication channel. Of course, not everything can be located or linked to from the homepage, so there will always be an element of searching involved. But we want the structure of all the school and department and program webpages to be as well-organized as it can be, and to make that information as easy to find as possible. There are 125 individual web editors who actually manage those 3,500-plus webpages, and our department provides training modules and tech support for all of them. Last year, Rebecca, shout out to Rebecca, who's running cameras and broadcasting this meeting on GCI 14 and on the district's website streaming. She, last year, did site visits to 25 schools and met with more than 50 school staff to spare best practices and individually review the school websites and any needed improvements. Also, last year, Rebecca built a new training module for web accessibility to help keep us in compliance with the new law. So that's put us in a really good position for moving forward this year as we're onboarding new site managers, new principals. And let's see, so since August 1, we pulled some stats for you. The district's website has had over 163,000 visits and more than 580,000 page views. That's since August 1. I think we've come a long way to addressing the audit recommendation to make the website communication central. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about back-to-school communication activities.
Thank you, Ms. Roundhorse. Is there any public comment on the report? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Don't go to the board for questions and comments. Mr. Doran, Ms. Dominique.
Thank you for the report, and I want to publicly thank you, since I was one of the recipients of quick action. Being that the website is so large and the fact that you're working as a team to make it more and more effective and efficient. But I want to thank you for, you know, a couple of pieces that I happened to come across that were out of date at the start of the school year that were so quickly. One of them was immediate, you know, I think it was within the day that it was updated and done, and the other one was shortly thereafter. So I just want to thank you for your team for that responsiveness, and so that it's also encouraging if somebody does come across something, let you know, and you'll take care of it, so appreciate it.
Please do. Ms. Dominique.
I don't think I heard you say it, but Rebecca is responsible for a lot of our graphics and a lot of our brochures and things that are sent out. She's a great person with the graphics. She do a great job. My one question is, do you get a lot of people asking about, how do you get to certain things on the website? Because they're asking me, and I don't go out to the website that much. I don't like dealing with it. But do you get a lot of people asking you about how to get to different things, or they're having a hard time getting to things on the website?
I wouldn't say that we receive very many, you know, questions about locations for things. But certainly, if a link isn't working, you know, I think we're usually the first call. And, you know, we're going through pretty regularly to make sure that, when there's a big event coming up, that is that listed, is that located in the most logical place? Trying to be proactive, but there are a lot of pages, so we always, you know, if someone's looking for something and they can't find it, we would love to hear from them, so we can, we can help support that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for providing our first monthly communication. This came out of discussions after, you know, the board has had a real interest in communication and making sure that we are providing that communication. And so I appreciate you coming in, because there's a lot of things that we may see, and then there's things that we don't see, and so providing us that information is great. So thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. I know I was your fourth report in a row, so I was, I was trying to hurry.
We have no action items, old business, so we'll move to action items, new business. First order is our Resolution 2019-03 honoring Hispanic Heritage Month. This is related to our core value around respect and diversity and dignity of all. School Board Resolution 2019-03 honors Hispanic Heritage Month and proclaims September 15, 2018, through October 15, 2018, for Hispanic cultural activities throughout the district.
Move to approve Resolution 2019-03 honoring Hispanic Heritage Month.
Second.
And Mr. Rice, would you please read the resolution?
Whereas the United States commemorates the heritage and culture of American citizens whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. And whereas, beginning on September 15, 2018, and ending October 15, 2018, the United States celebrates Hispanic Heritage Month as enacted in public law 100-402 on August 17, 1988. And whereas Hispanic Americans have contributed significantly to the economic, cultural, spiritual, and the political development of the Fairbanks North Star Borough. And whereas Hispanic Americans value knowledge and learning. And whereas Hispanic American students currently compromise 9% of the student body in the Fairbanks North Star Borough School District. And whereas three Hispanic American exempt and 24 classified staff support all students, learning, and whereas the 30 Hispanic American teachers distinguish themselves as educators in the Fairbanks North Star Borough School District classrooms. And whereas two Hispanic American building administrators feed their schools with vision. And whereas Hispanic Americans serve on the school board with distinction. And whereas all citizens will benefit from an accurate portrayal of Hispanic heritage and culture. And whereas research findings suggest that presenting Hispanic American culture, history, and perspective in the classroom promotes academic success for Hispanic American students. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Fairbanks North Star Borough Board of Education proclaims September 15, 2018, through October 15, 2018, Hispanic Heritage Month, and encourages schools and teachers to honor it with performances, readings, guest speakers, displays, lessons, lectures, and cultural celebrations.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Is there any public comment related to the resolution? Seeing none, I close public comment. Go to the board for any questions or comments. Seeing none, Ms. Tuttle, would you please call the vote? Mr. Jerome?
Yes.
Colonel Bondurant?
Yes.
Colonel Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. McConnell?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Dominique?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Bartels?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Next item is our lobbyist contract approval. This is related to our goal and objective around organizational support. The lobbyist contract with John Ringstad ended June 30, 2018. If it's the school board's intent to extend a contract for this school year, a new contract will need to be approved for the period September 4, 2018, through June 30, 2019, at a cost of $40,000.
Move to approve the lobbyist contract for John Ringstad for the period September 4, 2018, through June 30, 2019, at a cost of $40,000.
Second.
Okay. So Mr. Ringstad was not able to be here this evening, but he and I have spoken. There weren't any changes from previous years other than the dates. And we've done some different things with dates, but realized that we really need to spend some time on the front end. We used to approve the lobbyist contract in November, but really, it's more of a benefit to be able to start having conversations in the fall with our legislators before they leave town. And so we discussed moving it to this earlier time. We actually were going to do it in August and just couldn't get through all the pieces, but, so that's what's before us tonight. Starting public comment related to the contract.
Okay, seeing none. Go to the board for questions or comments. Okay, seeing none. Ms. Tuttle, would you please call the vote? Colonel Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Jerome?
Yes.
Colonel Bondurant?
Yes.
Mr. Bartels?
Yes.
Mrs. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. McConnell?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Dominique?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Next is Policy 264, School Board Meeting Types of Meetings First Reading. This is related to our goal and objective around effective communication. In an effort to increase participation at meetings and increase input from students and parents, the board is proposing to move their meeting time for, their meeting time for regular meetings to 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. It is proposed that board preliminaries and administrative reports would be scheduled for the time from 6:00 to 6:50, allowing for a short recess, and from 6:50 to 7:00 p.m., or allowing for a short recess from 6:50 to 7:00 p.m. Upon reconvening at 7:00 p.m., the board would adopt its agenda and immediately begin with public testimony on non-agenda items, providing the public with a better sense of when testimony would occur in the meeting. Non-agenda public testimony would be followed by the Superintendent Report, Old Business, New Business, and Board Comments. The proposal to restructure the meetings would also provide the public with a better sense of when the board would get to its actual business, as well as providing an earlier opportunity in the evening for public testimony on the agenda items, which would be beneficial to students, parents, and staff. Move to approve First Reading, Public Hearing, and Advancement to Second Reunion of Policy 264, School Board Meeting Types of Meetings.
So over the past six years, I've heard significant discussion and had school board members present various ideas on how to adjust meeting times so that the various impacts could be reduced on our students and our listening audience, and potentially moving our work to a little bit earlier in the evening so that people aren't having to stay up till after 10 o'clock at night to hear all of our business. So combining all of that information, I asked to have the administration look into this, and we looked at the various pieces. And so I felt that it was important that the board have the opportunity to have that discussion. And so that's why this policy is before us. And so first, I'll go to any public testimony related to school board meetings, Policy 264, First Reading. We have a quiet audience tonight. Okay, I'll close public testimony and go to the board for questions, comments, discussions on the policy. I look this way, so, or I look this way, but I'll go this way. So Mr. Bart, I'll go right down the line, and then I'll start this way.
So I just, just a clarification, under the public content of the introduction of this, it calls for a break, but I didn't see that in the actual policy as it suggested. And I, I'm encouraged by that. I mean, I think I support this policy and this move to an earlier meeting. But I, I just want to clarify that the policy itself does not call for a 6:50 break in the meeting. Is that accurate?
It does not. That's the, in the, if I remember right, in the AR, we have the layout of the meeting, so it would be in the AR, but we could add it to the policy if, that wouldn't be an issue.
Right. No, I would suggest not adding it and just keep with the flow of the meeting and let it continue. A president's discretion could maybe call for that break if they, if they felt it was necessary. But I think just to keep with the meeting flow, that that not be a part of the agenda, so. That's just all I had. Thank you.
Ms. Dominique.
Since you made that comment, I think I'll forego.
Okay.
I'll move it on.
Okay. Mr. Jerome?
I just want to speak in strong support of this. I know that there are times when students would express frustration. I say, "Come testify at the school board meeting," and they say, "Well, it starts at 7 o'clock." And we have homework to do, and we have sports. to participate in. And I think that having it at, starting at 6 o'clock would just be a far more accessible time, not only for students to come down and voice their opinions, but for parents, for staff members. And so, you know, with our goal of effective communication, I think that this is a strong step in that direction. And frankly, being able to get to bed on time would be something that we would all appreciate, so.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Doran, I'll start back this way.
I've got several comments, and so you can cut me off and say, "Come back to me," or whatever point. Actually, I feel this is premature, that what I'm interested in and what is really the level of concern and what those concerns are. This is a pretty detailed solution to something. I don't know whether it solves those concerns. On the first bluster that I look at and say, "Well, really a pro for it is that it does give an established time for public comment," which is, I think, something that is in all of our interest, I mean, as a whole community to look at, because right now it is a bit of a variable. And sometimes our preliminaries, so, and many times, we kind of think, "Well, it's roughly about a half hour, 20 minutes to a half hour. We can be done." We do often, enough the preliminaries go on longer, and perhaps we can look at what's in those preliminaries and how those occur. The, I am concerned about some of the early starts, whether we're trading off one set of problems for another set of problems. 7 o'clock at night may work for, you know, a lot of people and some not. 6 o'clock may work for a lot of people and some not. I'm thinking of work conflicts. You know, if you get off at 5:00 and at what point to have dinner, it could be that it's very good to have kids here at 6:00 and get home and have dinner at 7:00 or 7:30, versus having it, be able to pick them up from work, have dinner, and then come after dinner and be here at 7:00. And, you know, I know you have sleep times and things like that depending on the age. But I'm not sure we're, we're solving a problem there. We're just creating maybe one set of conflicts in exchange for another set of conflicts. The, you know, other questions that I came up with is, you know, where in those preliminaries, student performances, school spotlight, spotlights fit? Are these things we should talk about? Where they are? How they occur? How long they go? How does that impact in terms of special meetings? Can the board be there at perhaps 5:00 o'clock? Or do we always do special meetings on Monday, you know, in terms of work schedules? And I know I'm in a luxury position in that most mornings I have a little flex as to what time I start. Some mornings I don't, but, you know, it's, you know, many of the board members and future board members may not have that, that luxury. The, so, I come up with a lot of questions, you know, information and reports. Sometimes they go on longer than we're only allowing 50 minutes for it. Do, will those be continued after public comment, before the other things, or at some point? Are we splitting those types of things? So, my main concern is that we're offering a, a solution without having had, let's say, a broader conversation of what the concerns are to look at. And certainly in the last year, you've mentioned you've heard specific comment. I have not gotten any comment, and I don't remember any specific comment coming out of public testimony over the recent years regarding that. I'm also very concerned about radio coverage. Have we talked with KUAC?
Yes.
Will they be able to do that?
Yes.
And how does that impact the community in what, what they hear and, and the news, the other programs that would be shifted that often happen between 6:00 and 7:00 that are good community things? So, so those are some of those things. I think there are a lot more questions that need to go into this before we come up with a solution. And so, I think it's pretty premature, and I'm still looking for information. What are the specific concerns? So, thank you.
Ms. McConnell?
Thank you. I'm in favor of this. Having served almost four terms on the board, I remember early on when we used to meet from 7:00 to 11:00 p.m., and we decided, you know, we're so brain-dead after 10 o'clock, you know, that we moved it to 10 o'clock. So, I'm in favor of this. I believe it would help us become more efficient as a board. We just need to be really concise in our comments on issues. We need to do our homework before we come to the meetings. But the main reason I'm in favor of this is because, like it was stated earlier, that this new time would really give an opportunity to have more public testimony on agenda items. And I think that's very important for us to serve as school board members, to hear that input and those comments and concerns by the folks on our agenda items. So, I am in favor for this.
Thank you, Ms. McConnell. Mr. Rice?
I'm in favor of this as well. I think I'm one of the ones who lives out in the North Pole area, so after we get done with some of these meetings around midnight, from, you know, hearing a lot of comments and, you know, a lot of discussion, you know, I usually don't get home and get to bed until about 1:00 o'clock, and I'm up at 4:30 getting ready for work right after that. Being on the board for the last 10 years, you know, I've always made little comments of, you know, if we could have the meetings a little bit earlier, you know, it'd help us out, especially with a lot of us who are in the outline areas, because it's hard for us to be able to go home out to North Pole or maybe Esther, get, get our dinner or whatever you were saying, and then come all the way back into town for a school board meeting. A lot of times for people who live out in the outline areas like North Pole, Esther, Solcha, and stuff like that, it's a lot easier for us to be able to get off of work, come to a meeting, state what we need to state, and then be able to go home and spend the time with our family and be able to have dinner with them at a decent hour. So, yeah, I'm in favor of this.
Thanks, Mr. Rice. Ms. Lambert?
So, just to clarify, they can start broadcasting at 6:00?
Correct.
So, we wouldn't necessarily have to take that break then?
Correct.
Because the break was for the...
Correct.
Right.
Okay. So, the, since you asked the question, can I elaborate?
Yes.
So, I, the break was built in originally thinking that we had to take the break, but it actually isn't necessary. There was confirmation today from the KUAC station manager that they could broadcast it in its entirety. And then there's also other pieces around public radio apps and our streaming and GCI. So, all of this has been looked into. Thank you to our CDNE and technology teams for, for working on this. And then within, if, you know, within our agenda, like, like Mr. Bartel's pointed out, since we don't have a, we didn't write that into the policy, it just says from 6:00 to 9:00. The board actually has the ability just to say, "We're shifting it from 6:00 to 9:00, and we run it like we do from 7:00 to 10:00, but we're shifting it from 6:00 to 9:00." So, that, that break is not a necessity. But when the agenda was drafted, when we were working on this last week, there was still that possibility. So, that update kind of came through later today. So, thank you for pointing that out.
So, I'm in favor of this. We've had many, especially some of the kids, we've had some very long meetings. And I know some of the, our, our school kids wanted to testify, but when we're running 10, 11 o'clock at night, you know, those kids are gonna go home. And so, we miss those opportunities of having our students come in and testify on what they feel are very important issues to them. And we've had that multiple times when we've had major meetings, long meetings. And, you know, even some of our public that are not kids, but some of the adults don't want to have to be in here until 10 or 11 o'clock at night to try to testify on something also. So, I think this will help that. And, you know, if, if we change things around, like in the administrative regulation, we want to do things a little bit differently, we can within, within the policy, because it's not in the policy, it's very, it's very broad-based. The policy is that we can always change things if they don't quite work out the way we want to and shift that schedule around in accordance with the regulation. But it would be nice, since this is first reading and it's gonna go out, if it could be publicized, so we can, you know, we can get a lot of the public and see if they'll come back and, and give us there and put on what they think about this.
Thank you. Ms. Dominique?
I do too agree. We need to change the times for our meetings. I kind of would like to know, and probably for second reading, we could get that, how many times did we go past 10 o'clock? Because I think that would, I really think that would be a part of this, because pulling the time back an hour, you know, we could go to 10 or 11 again. So, I kind of would like to know if Sharon could pull that together and just kind of, I just would like to know, because I think that would be something that would be bearing on this. Because when you push the time back or up, or whatever way you want to do it, people tend to talk a little bit longer, so.
Dr. Gabor?
I just wanted to speak on behalf of administration. We are very supportive of this policy. I think a lot of feedback comes behind the scenes, and Sharon actually gets a ton of it in terms of parents, people who want to be engaged in the board meeting, and they call the school board secretary to, to try to navigate that. And so, then the, the angst comes in with the kids, the spotlights, the performances, you know, and so if that start, and also the staff, we have staff that comes, school staff that come to support that. So, if that could be earlier, it would be easier on our school family. And then the testimony, not just the public testimony, but also our action items of that. And that's not just kids. We've had people walk out. I mean, they just can't, they just can't do it. So, again, I think it helps the engagement piece in general. So, when I attempt to encourage people to run for the school board, as many of you do, the very first comment I get is, "Too many meetings, too late." And the, and the reason is family. You know, they don't want, thank you, Mrs. Haas. Yeah, so, you know, they, they don't want to sacrifice that much time away from family. So, you know, if we could not only start earlier, but also tighten up our meetings, which I, we've been, you know, working on doing, I think we might hope it'd be great if we got more engagement around people running for the school board, or at least interested in that. And, and then staff, I mean, and so, to Mr. Rice's point, you know, when you're, when you're up at 5:00, getting your family ready to go and back here at work at, you know, some people start at different times, but, you know, it's, it's hard on staff, too. I don't know if you've noticed, but we release as many staff as possible at 9:00, and I think I'm gonna start releasing the executive board at 10:00. Just, it's too late. I mean, people don't function well the next morning. So, anyway, so lots of feedback behind the scenes around this. So, from an administration perspective, supportive and glad that we got the radio station piece worked out, because I know that's very important to people.
Okay, and hands go up again. I'm gonna go down to the Colonel, though, because he hasn't had an opportunity to speak.
I, I see both sides, you know, that have been expressed. I'm all in favor of having an earlier meeting as long as it's disciplined. And I think that's our challenge, where we're not addressing the discipline required in the agenda to be able to make our meetings brief. So, some of the meetings that I attended last year that, and I believe we had one where I didn't leave this building until after midnight. We allowed some of the earlier items to go on for 45 minutes to an hour, where we're trying to highlight the success of our, you know, our students and our schools and school administrators, but that's not allowing us to get to the business of the board per se, or what's on the agenda for the, you know, for the evening in question, and limiting the number of agenda items. So, you know, being able to pace the board's work over the course of a year. So, putting first things first, I think are very important. With regard to a 6:00 p.m. start time, certainly I can make that happen. It just impacts my duty day in a different way than the last year of service on the board has, where I've had to shift my following day's duty day, you know, my battle rhythm around, just on, on the, on the chance that it does go till midnight or 11:00. So, we kind of have hedged our bets that I'm probably not gonna be as fresh based on how long these meetings have gone. So, starting at 6:00 p.m. should not be free license to go to 10, 11:00, because now we have an extra hour to cram more in. So, if the agenda's only supposed to go three hours, and it doesn't necessarily have to, you know, let's be more disciplined about how we execute and, you know, time things out. So, we put the public on a clock. We don't put ourselves on the clock.
I agree.
We should probably consider that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Tutto, because I haven't had a chance to speak yet. Colonel Bondurant, do you, do you have anything to add? Okay, okay. Ms. McConnell?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify my earlier comments, you know, about being concise and really keeping within on that time. You know, like, like was said, you know, that doesn't give us more time to continue on. You know, if we're gonna have our meeting times from 6:00 to 10, or 6:00 to 9:00, then let's end at 9:00. As was mentioned, too, you know, there've been some nights we've had so many things on the agenda, it's, it's ridiculous. And I've even told my staff, you know, "Don't expect me in right at 8:00, because these are long nights." And so, we just have to really be disciplined, as was mentioned earlier. And I just wanted to clarify about my comments about being concise and being more efficient as board members and doing our homework before we get to the meeting.
And I, I'll make a comment, just because we spent, every week we meet to set the agenda. And there are times, like our last meeting, that we had to move some things, and so it ended up being a shorter meeting than we had planned. And then tonight, we have more things. And, but the board has the ability to table an item to the next meeting. And although that isn't good practice, if we want to try and stay within, let's say, our group norms, and we say, "You know what? If we get to a certain point in the evening and we haven't gotten to this, then, you know, then we're gonna, we're gonna table that to the next item, to the, to the next meeting." There's also things that, suggestions. So, I just have to say, my phone has been going off, people who are listening on the radio saying, "I'm in support." So, I'm gonna encourage them to come testify the next time. But there are, there are also things, like, we, we could say, "If we go past 9:00 o'clock, there are no board comments that evening," and we reserve our comments for another time. There are other pieces that we could do as board members that have been mentioned to try and streamline our process. The main meetings are always long, because we have so many kids that want to be, or so many kids that we recognize for their accomplishments, so many staff members. We often, the retirement night, we try and make a lighter night, but we end up having so much recognition. And so, if the, the board has felt very strongly about continuing to do recognition and continuing to do performances, but that is a piece that, you know, as, as was brought up, could be for further consideration by the board in the future, if that's, if it's not working to have those things within a three-hour block of time, how we streamline that, or maybe going to an every other board meeting. You know, once a month, we have students that we perform, and once a month, we do, we do recognition. And we've talked about some of those things when we've done agenda setting, because we have tried to streamline the meetings more. And it, but it does take an effort on all of our parts as well as we work through those processes. So, did I see other, yeah, Ms. Dominique?
Don't take this as critical, anyone up here, but is there a way that we could put ourselves on a timer?
There is.
Five minutes? Because we give the public three minutes, and board could have five minutes?
Total?
Yes.
I mean, you might have to have some follow-up, just like what you just made it, and I had follow-up on it. But I'm saying your initial comments
Right.
be five minutes, and put us on a timer.
Or three minutes, if that's what the public gets.
I, I kind of think it should be five, only because of the fact that when somebody comes and makes a testimony, you usually have a little bit more that you might, a board member may want to say. I'm just suggesting.
So, again, that's part of group norms. I think that if, I don't even know that you'd have to do an official timer. If the group agrees that we should limit our comments, then that's what, the group agrees. And I think we just have to monitor each other and monitor ourselves and be responsible with that. Mr. Doran?
Okay. I think there've been a number of good suggestions, and I can build on them, you know, getting public input, and that the public knows that it's a change in meeting time, just looking at that agenda item. For most of the public, they would, just talking about meetings, I mean, it doesn't, most public would not think of it as a meeting time change unless they go really into the agenda. So, I think, you know, getting public input is very good, and that they know that this is what's being thought about. I think getting that information on how many times we've gone past the 10 o'clock, and by sort of how much, for 15 minutes, I mean, several times we've been real close on that, is good, because in the fall, they on that, is good, because in the fall, they tend to be shorter meetings. In the spring, we've got bigger topics, and they are going to be long meetings, and we know that. I do think that when we talk about discipline to the agenda, there is good feedback on that, and we have had some presentations that could have been shorter and arguably might have been shorter, even though it was good information. But I would caution us real carefully about time limits on the board. We don't have much time to talk, and we're under some restrictions from the Open Meetings Act. And often enough times, a topic comes up, we find out about it on Thursday. And we have to talk informatively on it on Tuesday. It's not a lot of time, and it's often late Thursday when we get it. So we're really talking only a few days to process it, make sure we have the information, try and maybe get some questions, formulate what those questions might be. And so, and I think that part of our job as board members is to be able to discuss and maybe debate some different perspectives, even if we come to the same conclusion. But to look at that, so I would, you know, there's a balance in that discipline. Can we be more efficient of a time? Absolutely. But I would caution us in terms of how we set that up, so we're not just coming in as a rubber stamp group. And I think this board, in my experience with the school board over decades, has been that the board has not been a rubber stamp board. They do discuss things. And so we need to make sure we build that in, and that we keep that cognizance of an exchange of ideas that can be done in public, and that we don't limit that and, you know, put things behind the curtains, so to speak. We have to be cognizant of the open meetings. And the more information we have, the more prelude we have of also knowing what's coming. And I know there have been times when the board, there's been kind of a topical calendar put out by the administration to the board, that these are certain reports that will be coming, you know, and we know approximate times, you know, months or something like this, and they can adjust. But I just would caution us to be very careful about restricting board comments and discussions, you know, so we can have it in public, people can hear what we have to say.
And I think, I want to just be really clear, that I don't think anyone on the board wants to be a rubber stamp board, and I think that the board will allow for communication or have that dialogue. I was thinking earlier today, actually, that we used to get, and maybe we still do, so I apologize, because if you do send it, I already know about it, so I haven't been reading. But we used to get the agendas, like after we'd have an agenda meeting, then you would send out the next kind of further agenda. Can we go back to that if we aren't doing it? Are you doing it?
No, I'm not doing it, but we can change access, so we can just access.
So we can access it on Board Docs? That's right. Okay, now I remember. And so after we approve, or not approve, but after we have an agenda setting meeting, or, you know, the board president has an agenda setting meeting with the administration, then that, then those can be accessed, so that Sharon will set it up, so that those can be accessed, so that people can see how, what topics might be coming up in the future. One point I was going to make is also that part of being, and I think Mrs. McConnell may have said this, and I just want to reiterate this, but part of being concise in our work isn't just around discussion, because if we have the discussion, that's great. But there was one meeting where there were three questions asked that had been answered previously by the presenter. And so when we ask questions that a presenter has specifically stated, and then the presenter has to do that, I would encourage the board to make sure that we're listening while the presenters are presenting, so that those are the type of things that we can really streamline as we work through the process as board members, making sure that we've read our packets, those types of things. And the administration, obviously, is always open to having questions asked about different agenda items, if there are questions prior to the meeting, so. So in an effort to move us along, because I feel like we've had a robust discussion, and I hear the board publicly telling me to move things along, I will ask Ms. Tuttle to please call the vote on school board meetings, types of meetings, first reading.
Colonel Bondurant?
Yes.
Colonel Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Jerome?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Bartels?
Yes.
Mrs. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. McConnell?
Yes.
Mr. Dorn?
No.
Ms. Dominique?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas? Yes, motion carried. Thank you. Moving to our next item, and actually, our next five items are all related to purchasing and contracting. So we are going to, I'm going to just remind everyone that these are all related to organizational support around our goal and objective. And we will move to approve, or sorry, Policy 440.11, Purchasing and Contracting, Acquisitions of Supplies, Equipment, or Services Over $30,000. This one is specifically related to the threshold for formal bidding procedures and has not been updated since 1990. The proposed change for Policy 440.11, Purchasing and Contracting, Acquisition of Supplies, Equipment, or Services Over $30,000, attempts to bring the threshold into alignment with industry standards while maintaining a high level of accountability.
Move to approve first reading, public hearing, and advancement to second reading of Policy 440.11, Purchasing and Contracting, Acquisition of Supplies, Equipment, or Services Over $30,000.
Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Gaboric, and then we'll move through from there. There's going to be crossover, I think, or not, well, some of what may be said in one piece, like in this first piece, will potentially apply to all of the policies. Is that fair?
Yes, there's a theme, clearly. If you had a chance to look through these, this really is an update that's needed to happen for some time. Mr. Grayheck's been working on this diligently behind the scenes with administrative services, and I think we have all the pieces pulled together for you. The fact that it hasn't been updated in 28 years is significant, and we need to unify, we need to align more closely with Uniform Grant Guidance, and that is specifically related. We have to follow that guidance because we receive federal funds. And the whole purpose is to ensure timely processing and update systems to meet current standards and also better meet both internal and external needs. And so I'll turn it over to Mr. Grayheck. And then Mr. DeGraw is available if you have any questions of him as well. Thanks.
Good evening. I'm Bart Grayheck, Director of Procurement and Warehousing. As Dr. Gaboric said, the policy hasn't been updated since 1990. In that time, well, I started working in purchasing at the university in 1992. The thresholds there were 25,000. They're currently 100,000. The state procurement code was 25,000 then. It's now 100,000. The Uniform Grant Guidance, actually, I don't know what the history of Uniform Grant Guidance, but the Federal Acquisition Register, which I'm pretty sure that our policies were based on, just with my knowledge of my predecessor and his long federal acquisition history, he was a 20-year Army veteran, and worked in procurement there, came over and set up the purchasing and warehousing system here and established most of these policies. So I'm sure it was based on the Federal Acquisition Register guidelines. At the time, 30,000, which is now 150,000, and that's the same as Uniform Grant Guidance. And so, and Anchorage School District is also at 100,000 for their threshold for formal solicitations. So what we're trying to do with this is to bring our purchasing thresholds in alignment with that. It helps vendors around the state have an idea of what qualifies as formal solicitation and what falls under the Small Purchase Guidelines. It also helps to streamline the process. We have, with the formal solicitation process, we have requirements for advertising X number of days prior to the solicitation. If there are amendments, they have to, and they're within a certain amount of time of the opening, the opening has to be pushed back. And so something that is a relatively small dollar threshold can take a long time. And so we're trying to streamline that process, and under the goal, we had noted the goal, but the objective under that is to execute efficiency and best practice and operational support and financial management. And so we're trying to streamline the process, so the schools can get what they need, when they need it, without sacrificing any competitive advantage we might get. For any questions?
Let's go to the public first.
Oh, okay.
Any public comment? I shouldn't ever assume no, but they're a quiet group this evening, they're listening. I'm going to close public comment and go to the board for any questions or comments. Ms. Lambert.
So this is just purely semantic, and it's kind of throughout all of the different policies, but is there a reason it says personal property or personal services instead of kind of just saying the acquisition of supplies, equipment, or services? Because it just seems, the word "personal" is, it throws me.
Well, I guess it's something that I haven't looked at changing. We were focused on the thresholds and not the specific language, but if it's something that's, I can look and see if there's specific reasons why it says "personal property" instead of, as you say, "good supplies and equipment," which is what we use in our admin regulations. So.
Yeah, if you could. I mean, it kind of runs throughout it, and so if there's a reason for it, that's fine. It just, that word "personal" in front of that just kind of throws me a little, and maybe if it just, you know, kind of mirror the titles, but just take a look at that.
Okay.
Mr. Dorn.
A couple of questions, and you've started to address some of them, and I appreciate that, in terms of mentioning that Anchorage also uses 100,000. Do we know the other big five at this point?
Juno. I'm sorry. Juno is 50,000. Matsui was 50,000, and I know that they were working on increasing theirs. And Keen Eye is 15,000.
15, 1-5?
1-5.
Okay.
It surprised me. As much as 30,000 surprised everybody else when I told them that that's what ours was, 15,000 surprised me when I saw that.
Okay. And this information is very helpful in terms of looking at it. And I know, on one hand, 100,000 is not a very significant number in the big picture. On the other hand, it's a very, very significant number. And so that's why I'm asking the question on it. The issue that you've indicated, because I was listening carefully, is that it's streamlining the process and pulling us into alignment with some of the other big areas. And I'm glad you also included the university in that. What's the actual impact on, I mean, do we have, are you dealing with that many between the 30 to 100,000, or?
Well, the actual numbers isn't relevant. In fact, I had pulled the information that we had. Over the last three years, we've had 27 solicitations that have come to the board for approval. If the, those same 27 were processed under the proposed changes, 15 of those would not have required formal solicitation processes, 12 of them would. Some of the ones that would still need competition are fuel transportation, fuel, we do a large bid for fuel for the district, several of the requirements contracts for nutrition services, things like that. We did, if you recall, last spring, we did a bid for a loader for FMD. Those kind of things would still require, would be required to follow the formal bid procedures.
And informationally to the board, you know, let's say that as you get close to that 100,000, what would be the information, the communication piece that the board would know we're putting out these contracts are being awarded?
Well, if we change all of the policies that are on the table this evening, then the board would be notified at the 100,000 threshold. That's, something's up for debate when we, when we get to that point. I don't know if you want to jump ahead on that, but the other schools, districts, and the state have significantly higher thresholds for board approval than we do. And so, we can...
Okay, and they separate board approval versus the purchasing solicitations?
Yes, and ours have always tracked. There's, they have a distinction between the two.
And then the last question on this part of it is, as I was looking at it and considering it, and, you know, not necessarily out of, I think it's out of the ballpark, you know, whether there was something in between, you know, because 100,000 is still a lot. But ripple effects with other policies that we have, and I thought, you know, the one where we have requests for fundraising that comes to the board, things cost more, would we be looking at further policy changes down that way, or?
Well, our policy...
Your...
Yeah, and I don't, I can't speak to that type of thing.
That hasn't come up, but it's certainly something we could look at. We haven't related fundraising to this specifically.
Okay, yeah, and I'm not asking necessarily that it be relooked at. I'm just trying to think of ripple effects that might be, so. Okay, thanks.
Ms. Dominique.
So if I heard you right, are you saying that if it's under 100,000, it would not come to the board for approval?
Well, that's actually not part of this motion. This motion is just addressing formal bid procedures.
Okay. There's another motion for that. Okay, I don't see anything further. Mr. Dorn.
Okay, and these are linked, though, so...
Well, they already have to be.
Okay. All right.
Oh, yeah. Let's, let's, let's vote, let's vote on, it looks like we're ready to vote on first reading. Oh, no.
Just a question. President Haas, can we link these all together?
So, here's where we landed. We actually had that discussion. We were going to put almost all of them together. However, if there was a feeling from the board that they didn't want to move, that we didn't want to move forward with the change, and they were all clumped together and it was not approved, we would not be able to look at this for individual items for six months.
Understood.
And so we tried that, and it just did not, it just didn't work out, till we got to the end, the very last one, so.
Mr. Dorn.
I'll wait until we get to the other one that addresses it.
And this is just first reading. Like to remind folks that we're just at first reading, so we can have the discussions as we move through, and then if we need to adjust, we can before second reading, so.
Ms. Tuttle, would you please call the vote on 440.11, Purchasing and Contracting? Mr. Jerome?
Yes.
Colonel Bondurant?
Yes.
Colonel Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Dominique?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Bartels?
Yes.
Mrs. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. McConnell?
Yes.
Mr. Dorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas? Yes, motion carried. Thank you. Policy 440.12, Purchasing and Contracting, Acquisition of Supplies, Equipment, and Services Valued at Less Than $30,000, first reading. So those are related to our goal and objective around organizational support, and this is the threshold for formal bidding procedures, has not been updated since 1990. I don't think any of them have, so I'm not going to keep repeating that. The proposed change for 440.12, Purchasing and Contracting, Acquisition of Supplies, Equipment, or Services Valued at Less Than $30,000, attempts to bring the threshold into alignment with industry standards while maintaining a high level of accountability. Move to approve first reading, public hearing, and advancement to second reading of Policy 440.12, Purchasing and Contracting, Acquisition of Supplies, Equipment, or Services Valued at Less Than $30,000.
Second.
Oh, okay. Do you have anything to add on this particular policy?
Just, this one is kind of linked. We need to have something that fills the gap between the current small purchase threshold and the formal bid threshold. So if we raise the formal bid threshold to 100,000, we need to raise the small, because they're complementary to each other.
And any public comment on 440.12? Seeing none, I go to the board for questions or comments on 440.12. Is that a yes?
Yeah, I'm waiting for my name.
Ms. Dominique.
I kind of want you to repeat what you just said.
Okay, so this policy is complementary to the previous policy. So if we set the threshold for formal competition, saying that anything above 100,000 has to be dealt with as formal competition, we have to have this policy now adjusted to deal with anything that's below 100,000 dollars.
See, and now I can't go back and change the other one. Well, we're going to have a second... Well, we're going to have a second reading.
Right.
Okay. So, I'll go ahead and make my comment on this one, then. I think 100,000 is a little bit much. I was going to say we should change it to maybe 70,000. And the reason why I'm saying that is because of our budget constraints that we have. And if you're going to go out and get $100,000 worth of stuff several times over for supplies and equipment, we're locked in at this 100,000. So, I'm just saying, I know we're not at the state level that you were speaking about, but I think it should be a little bit less than 100,000.
Yes.
So, I think, I think that maybe Ms. Dominique might be mixing apples and oranges. So, this is, this is not saying that the board, this is just raising the limits for them, but they still have to bring it to the board. So, that's a separate issue. So, them bringing it to the board and us approving it would be a different policy versus just raising it from what, because this just raises it, but it doesn't deal with you having to bring anything to the board for approval.
Right, right.
So, so, right now, we haven't got to the, to the policy where they are asking not to have board approval for anything less than 100,000. That would be separate, right? So, this is just raising it. There's a separate policy for, for whether or not they have to bring any contract for board approval.
Yes. So, these two policies deal with how we get the competition. Later policies deal with how that, how the contracts are awarded, if that makes sense.
You're all looking at me. Stop looking at me. I got you. Okay. I understand.
Mr. Dorn.
Okay. Actually, this policy does not, nothing needs to come to the board on this policy.
Well, actually, at this point, unless we change the policy about board approval, it's still set at 30,000. So, even if we did something that fell under small purchase limit, we would still have to go to board for approval on it.
Right. Okay.
We're proposing raising that.
Okay. Except, what this really addresses is whether you need a formal bid versus an informal bid. The informal bid, you're still asking for three quotes, so to speak. Doesn't address what comes to the board.
This policy doesn't address that. And the, and the other policy doesn't address that either. That's, that's policy, I think, 440.152.
Right. I believe so.
Yeah.
So, so, that's the one we really want to address?
It sounds like.
Exact question. Okay. So, however, okay, these, these are linked. And in some ways, I like the idea of not having to get three bids, or three quotes, having been on the, the purchase side. Sometimes you have things. That is quite a wide gap in, although you can pretty well furnish your, get a lot of furnishings for that, and that would allow schools to do that without having a bid process. Is that correct? This one?
Yes. In fact, the, the bid that we did for furniture this spring, which was for the furniture requirements for all the schools, submitted their, their requests was $78,000.
Okay. So, in some ways, it gives the principals a little bit less of the onus, depending upon what they're doing.
Yeah. It gives them more flexibility on the timing. What is, the furniture bid was, was a good example, where schools are getting, get towards the end of the, the school year, and you're trying to figure out if they've got enough money to buy, left to buy furniture that they need. Once they have made that determination, they forward it to us. Well, then, we have, in the bid solicitation...
And what's the threshold at which you would not have to get three quotes?
Well, currently, our thresholds are set by admin regulations, and it's, if an individual item is less than $500, it's at the discretion of the principal or department head. If the extended price for that item is less than $1,000, then it's at the discretion. So, if, if you're buying, say...
Okay. So, so, $1,000 basically is the threshold with the 30,000 limit currently. So, the AR probably should be rewritten in light of this, that perhaps making the thousand a higher number, since this is what we're talking about three times. Okay. So, that would be in process. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Lambert. Move to extend the meeting until 11:00. We're not going to stay here that long. Is there a second?
Thanks.
Okay. Seeing no objections, we're extended to 11:00 PM. In general, as it applies to all of these, except for, say, a few, like emergencies, although we budget for emergencies as well sometimes, depending on what, you know, we have, we have budgets. These purchases are within budgeted allotments. We're not, you're not, here's a million dollars for this, we need 1.5, and this is why we're trying to do this. These are all purchases typically made around a budgeting process through our approved budget process. And obviously, there's times where we have to go outside of our budget. But I just want to clarify that I'm understanding that correctly, that these are predominantly approved purchases, even just through a budgeting process. We've budgeted for these items.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. And seeing nothing further on 440.13, two, thank you, I moved on accident. Ms. Tuttle, would you please call the vote?
Colonel Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Jerome?
Yes.
Colonel Bondurant?
Yes.
Mr. Dorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Dominique?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Bartels?
Yes.
Mrs. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. McConnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next is 440.13, purchasing and contracting, emergency contracts, first reading. So, this one requires a change because we did a first reading approval on the previous two. Did you have anything you wanted to add on this one?
Well...
Oh, sorry. I need a motion. Thank you.
Move to approve the reading, public hearing, and advancement to second reading of policy 440.13, purchasing and contracting, emergency contracts.
Is there a second? Thank you. Okay.
So, this is a notification to the board. If there's an emergency, regardless of what the dollar amount is, what we're looking at is aligning the, the threshold with the formal bid solicitation threshold and board notification thresholds. In any case, it's something that would be after the fact, and it's this question of, okay, at what level do we need to make a report to the board that we'd had this emergency purchase? To the best of my knowledge, I've been the purchasing director for 14 years, we haven't had a single emergency purchase that's had been reported to the board. So, this, I don't want to say that it's a moot point, because something could happen, but just in, in my experience, we haven't had anything in that classification, so...
Okay. So, any public comment related to 440.13? Seeing none, I go to the board for questions and comments.
One quick one.
Ms. Dominique.
Be less than five minutes. When you have an emergency situation, when would the board be notified? Immediately, the next day, the next week, or?
The next board meeting.
The next board meeting. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Dorn.
So, clarification, a contract may be given prior to the board getting a report, but that contract would stay in place, whatever the board felt.
Usually, because of the situation, it, what constitutes an emergency is something where there's a threat of bodily harm or damage to district property, or loss of, loss of district property if we don't act immediately. And so, this is something where we need to jump on it, get the contract in place. Usually, by the time anybody's notified about it, the work has already been done, the commitment's already been made, or if it's, it's a question of ordering parts, they're on their way here. I had also, discussing this with my staff earlier, if we have a threshold of 100,000, pretty sure that the board members are going to know about it before the board meeting that they, but, I guess what this hinges on is the discretion to determine what is an emergency purchase, because we need to have the people, for example, the director of facilities management, who is in the best position to let us know if there's something that's going to cause physical damage to the district property. We rely on their testimony that it is an emergency, and we don't have time to follow the bid procedures. And so, it's a question of notification at that point. And so, I guess it falls on you to determine what level you think an emergency purchase requires for us to inform you. But yes, it would be after the fact.
Okay. Seeing nothing further, Ms. McConnell, could you please call the vote on 440.13?
Sorry. Oh, my gosh. Well, okay, point 4:30 this morning. Ms. Tuttle, would you please call the vote?
Thank you.
Colonel Bondurant?
Yes.
Colonel Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Jerome?
Yes.
Ms. McConnell?
Yes.
Mr. Dorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Dominique?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Bartels?
Yes.
Mrs. Lambert?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Motion carried.
I'm really just checking to make sure you guys are all still awake.
That's right.
Policy 440.14, purchasing and contracting exemption from formal bid requirements. This is, if approved, the dollar figure would reference in 440.14, would need to be updated. Language has also been proposed to reference exemptions from cooperative purchasing agencies. I'll turn it back to you. Second, I need to first.
Move to a motion. First reading, public hearing, advancement to second reading of policy 440.14, purchasing and contracting exemption from formal bid requirements.
Second.
Okay. And now, I'll turn it to you.
Okay. So, this is another one where we're, we're just trying to bring the language into alignment with the other, other policies. In this case, the exemption really is the important thing. And if something is exempt, when it's $30,000, it's still going to be exempt when it's $100,000. There, there's no change to that. And so, the, the real, and I wouldn't say that it's even a real change on this, is the, the addition of the language about cooperative purchasing agencies. What we have right now is an exemption that allows us to purchase off previously competed contracts led by public agencies. These cooperative purchasing agencies are groups of public agency officers that have gotten together and pooled their, their buying power to get good deals on, on all kinds of items that we, that we buy on a regular basis, and they've extended the ability for us to purchase off of those agreements and enjoy all of the terms and conditions and benefits of those. And so, I'm just trying to make it specific that, that we are allowed to purchase off cooperative purchasing agreements. We've been, we've been using the ones that are more clearly under the terms, the state contract, the GSA, the King County Directors Association of Seattle, ones that were, that were clearly led by agents of public school districts or state agencies. But there are other ones out there that give us the same benefit, that don't necessarily fall under the same classification. We'd like to be able to have access to those also.
Okay. So, any public comment? Seeing none, public comments closed. I go back to the board for questions or comments. Seeing none. Ms. Tuttle, would you please call the vote on 440.14?
Mr. Jerome?
Yes.
Colonel Bondurant?
Yes.
Colonel Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. McConnell?
Yes.
Mr. Dorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Dominique?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Bartels?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Next is policy 440.152, purchasing and contracting, approval of contracts, board approval not required, first reading. This also aligns thresholds into alignment with industry standards. It hasn't been updated since 1990, and I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve first reading, public hearing, advancement to second reading of policy 440.152, purchasing and contracting, approval of contracts, board approval not required.
Okay. Turn it back to you. This is an alignment?
Well, it is, and, and our policies have always kept these thresholds in lockstep. But when I was researching this, I found that other districts and state agencies don't. An anchor school district has the formal solicitation threshold of 100,000, but their board approval threshold is 500,000. Juno has, let's see, both Juno and Matsu have no approval required to purchase goods, but the board needs to approve any contracts that are entered into over $200,000. And Keen Eye has no board approval whatsoever. So, they have a $15,000 bid threshold, but there's no board approval required for anything. The superintendent is allowed to approve all of their contracts for goods and services.
Okay. All right. Any public comment on 440.152? Seeing none, public comment is closed. I go to the board for questions or comments regarding this policy. Seeing none. Ms. Tuttle, would you please call the vote?
Colonel Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Jerome?
No.
Colonel Bondurant?
Yes.
Mr. Bartels?
Yes.
Mrs. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Dorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Dominique?
No.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next is 441.1, general requirements and conditions for all district purchases, non-discrimination first reading. This also is an update since 1990 and alignment with industry standards. I would entertain a motion.
Got to wake up. Move to approve first reading, public hearing, and advancement to second reading of policy 441.1, general requirement and conditions for all district purchases and non-discrimination.
Second. Okay. Is there any, nope. Go to you, Bart.
Okay. This is, is again tied to the formal threshold and the requirement of getting a certification from the bidders that, that they are not, that they are nondiscriminatory. Our contract language and the general terms and conditions that are attached to all of our solicitations, regardless of the threshold, include language saying that it's, that it's part of the, the agreement, and if they are found to be discriminatory in any manner, that the contract can be revoked. And so, it's, again, one of these things, if we, we can go, go ahead and raise the threshold on this to 100,000, it gives us a little continuity in the language for the bid solicitations that we send out.
So, any public comment on 441.1? Seeing none, I'll go back to the board for questions or comments. I know Mr. Dorn does.
This is one that I would really like to see the wording updated. I think I've given you heads up on it. But my concern is that the non-discrimination listing in this policy is not commensurate to our current public notice of non-discrimination. There are additional areas, changes in marital status, parenthood, sexual orientation, gender identity, and veteran status, which is in our current. I think this should be brought up to date, and same expectations of our contractors should be of what we're trying to promote.
Okay.
Ms. Lambert?
That was, that was going to be my comment, too, that we should probably update it, and our non-discrimination was updated, so if that's how we're going to abide by, then our contractors should also.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion. I hear from the board, interested in updating that language for second reading. Ms. Tuttle, would you please call for the vote?
Colonel Bondurant?
Yes.
Colonel Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Jerome?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
I hear from the board interested in updating that language for second reading. Ms. Tuttle, would you please call for the vote?
Colonel Banderant?
Yes.
Colonel Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Jerome?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Bartels?
Yes.
Mrs. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. McConnell?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Dominique?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Policy 442.3, invitation to bid, competitive sealed proposals, negotiated procurement, first reading. If, so the policy 440.12 was approved for first reading, and the policy title noted in policy 442.3 would need to be updated as well. Is there a motion?
Move to approve first reading, public hearing, and advancement to second reading of policy 442 dot three, invitation to bid, competitive sealed proposals, negotiated procurement.
Second.
Okay. Back to you.
This is really, again, just to bring the RFP process in alignment with the formal sealed bid proposals, everything else.
Okay. So, any public comment on 442.3? Seeing nobody coming forward, or go to the board for questions or comments on 442.3. Mr. Doran?
A quick one. I know this is particularly competitive bids. Those factors besides price are also applicable when we talk about the three quotes threshold that...
Yes, it's a little bit more complicated when you, sorry, I can get a little, get some less feedback. When you're trying to do a request for proposal under a formal threshold, we still do a lot of the same language that we have. In fact, even bids that we did under a thousand, under a hundred thousand dollars, if we raised a threshold of that. As they got higher, we would have more, we call it a semi-formal solicitation, just a lot of the same language, a lot of the same processes. We can't really skip a lot of processes with an RFP because we have to be able to explain the evaluation factors, allow offers to submit their proposals, review the proposals, negotiate if possible. So, there's less of a streamlining for that. But it seems that, in my experience, most of the solicitations that we do that are requests for proposal are usually larger dollar threshold items.
Right, and I'm not, just so it's clear, I'm not asking for any skipping. I'm assuming that factors that go beyond just the dollar amount, I know sometimes we don't go with a low bidder for a variety of reasons that have to be justified, et cetera, but.
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Bartels?
Mr. Greyheck, I just got a clarification. So, and maybe this is an AR question, not a policy, but on a bid situation, it's real easy, fairly easy, but on a RFP, who's the final approval? Is it a single person, is it a committee? How's that work?
Usually, there is an evaluation committee that's composed of the technical representatives from the purchasing department. So, if it's something, for example, that is brought to me by teaching and learning, there'd be higher ups in the teaching and learning program that would have more final say. I'm, in that situation, I would be more of a moderator of the procedure, making sure everything is done on a fair and equal footing for all offers, and making sure that the evaluation committee is evaluating the proposals evenly and can justify their decision. But the decision is ultimately up to the requesting department, as long as they can support their decision.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing nothing further. Ms. Tuttle, would you please call the vote on 442.3?
Mr. Jerome?
Yes.
Colonel Banderant?
Yes.
Colonel Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Dominique?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Bartels?
Yes.
Mrs. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. McConnell?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. So, this is a group of policies. Policy 442.10, invitation to bid, timing and circulation of invitation to bid. Policy 442.14, invitation to bid, pre-bid conference and addenda in bid documents. And policy 442.15, invitation to bid, bids submitted, withdraw, and late bids. First reading. Still related to organizational support, changes to the language regarding advertisement in so-and-so acceptance of bids noted in policies 442.10, 442.12, and 442.15 are intended to take advantage of the technological advances that would allow the district to achieve the same ends through more modern and efficient means. Move to approve first reading, public hearing, and advancement to second reading of policy 442.10, invitation to bid, timing and circulation of invitation to bid. Policy 442.14, invitation to bid, pre-bid conference and addenda in bid documents. And policy 442.15, invitation to bid, bids submitted, withdraw, and late bids.
Second.
Okay. Back to you for...
Well, I guess for the comment on this, this is nineteen ninety, very few businesses had fax machines, and let alone the internet and the other electronic methods of data transfer that we have right now. So, I'm just trying to, as if you recall from the opening ceremony at Hearing Auditorium, talking about coming into the twenty-first century. Well, we're still not in the twenty-first century on this policy, so trying to get there.
Okay, thank you. So, any public comment? Seeing none. Go to the board for questions or comments. Mr. Doran?
In this whole 442 section, it references the acquisition of personal property or personal services, and I would just like to ask that you would look into that, as Ms. Dominique had raised that question, why we're using personal, and whether it'd be better to have a better term in there. So, between now and this, it comes back to us, the second, I would like to see that addressed.
Will do.
And wherever it falls in any of these.
Okay.
Okay. Seeing nothing further. Ms. Tuttle, would you please call the vote on 442.10, 442.14, and 442.15?
Colonel Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Jerome?
Yes.
Colonel Banderant?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Dominique?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Bartels?
Yes.
Mrs. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. McConnell?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. All right. Thank you for being here to do all of these first readings for us, and we'll look forward to the changes for second reading. All right. We are down to board and superintendent comments. I am guessing Dr. Kaboric's going to invite everybody tomorrow to the K-12 brainstorming. The brown bag lunches with the superintendent are going to start, and as was mentioned by Ms. Roundhorse, the CDNE director, that they'll have the district's emergency communication test on Friday, September fourteenth. And then, the Fall Boardsmanship Academy is September fifteenth and sixteenth. We have that African-American Student Leadership Conference for middle school students is Monday, the seventeenth. And then, also that day, we have our next special meeting and work session, and then our regular meeting on September eighteenth. I'd like to give another congratulations to Michael Angayek for his leadership and award this evening that he received. It was also great to see such a large crowd out supporting him, and again, it shows the teamwork that's involved in making a school very successful. So, congratulations to him again. And at this point, I don't think I have anything further, and so, I will turn it over to Colonel Fisher for any comments.
No further comment this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Colonel Banderant.
No comment.
Thank you. Mr. Doran?
Just one, you know, we're talking about monies and stuff, and it brings up that budgeting, and I really am hopeful that this fall, we will start some conversation about budgeting, particularly with some of the suggestions that came in our discussions last spring about budget, because some of those things that were suggested or discussed for possible cuts, et cetera, there were some efficiencies, and some of those issues were ones that actually it was almost after the fact, well, we had this in place, then maybe this would happen, I'm thinking, particularly in the sports and those, and supervision and those types of things. But there were other ones. So, we could have that ahead of time, and if there is going to be potential transfers of duties or stuff like this, that we're prepared well in advance for that. So, you know, I'd like to at least see some conversation, how that's shaping up, what ideas might be out there.
Thank you. Ms. McConnell?
I'll keep it brief. I just wanted to congratulate Michael Angayek for his award, especially because not only is he a native male role model for our native students and all students, but also the service that he does for the community in addition to being the principal, and I just really want to recognize him for that. And also, I just wanted to bring to the board's attention, I've been receiving comments, maybe it's because of stories in the paper from Anchorage about the district down there looking at starting times for their schools. So, I've been receiving a few comments about that, are we looking at that? And I just want to bring it to the, on our radar. And then, also, comments about homework being assigned to students, so much of it, you know, that it takes up most of the evening for the students. So, those are the two items that have been brought to my attention from individuals in the community. And also, I just want to say, on the regional growth plan for Iowans, I really look forward to the final report. So, a lot of great information tonight, and strategies being considered. I know we have a work session on October fifteenth, and fortunately, I will be out of town then, because that's the week of the Alaska Federation of Natives Convention meetings, so I will not be at that meeting, but I will look at the report and offer some comments before I go there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rice?
Just want to say, you know, once again, congratulations, Michael Angayek, not because, you know, he's a positive native role model, but it's great to see someone you went to high school with, you know, succeed, and be able to show, you know, everyone else what you can do, once you put your mind to it. You know, his whole family's been like that. I remember his little sisters, you know, coming up through high school, and his mom actually was one of the teachers when I was at University Park as well, too. So, I kind of knew the whole family as we were all grown up, and so, it's just great to see, you know, someone, you know, you went to school with, you know, just succeeding, you know, and it makes you feel great, makes you feel proud of our school district, because he came up through our district as well, too. So, and I just want to say, you know, yesterday was Labor Day. There was a lot of people that went through the parade. I was able to be one of the flaggers to be able to help, you know, make sure everyone was walking safely in the parade. I did get some one-fingered waves, but I did get a lot of people who were thanking us and giving us a thumbs up as they were driving by. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Ms. Lambert?
Just briefly, I thought Sarah Geir's information on the financial education in Bonzai was really interesting, and if we can, you know, encourage some of the teachers to take a look at it, and if it's something that they could incorporate into their classrooms in one way or another, that would be great, because financial, I know a lot of people that come out of high school and just have absolutely, and even adults don't have any idea of how to manage their finances, and sometimes it comes into a stark reality. So, if we can start early, maybe that would be, that'd be something that we can do. And then, just on the committees, we have a policy committee coming up on the twenty-sixth of September, and they're still looking for two members of the committee. So, if you're interested in being a member of the committee, then who do we, who do these two, yes?
Yes, actually, on our website, the application is there, and information about the policy committee and the members.
Okay, so if you're interested, go to the website and...
Or they could call me.
Or you can call Ms. Kraska and apply, and then we'll be meeting on the twenty-sixth of September from six to seven thirty.
Thank you. Mr. Bartels?
So, I would just want to recognize Colonel Fisher, too, and congratulate him on his expansion of responsibility there. I'm sure that will come with an increase in mighty pay. Also, want to recognize the senior staff that's still here after ten o'clock, even though you got the okay to go. No, I just, I do, I want to thank the Federal Credit Union for, you know, their cooperation in helping support our education process, and I think it's that link between our community and our schools that is going to bridge that gap, especially on some of those life lessons. And I think that that's something that I'd encourage us to try to get further sponsorships to help support that, to maybe make that available at all schools. I look forward to learning more about that, but just wanted to extend my appreciation for that, as well as Principal Angayek and his award tonight, and also let it be known that he can also empty a room when he's done. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bartels. Ms. Dominique?
Well, I would also like to start out with congratulations for Ms. Angayek. I remember when he became the first principal, he still may be the youngest principal around, because I remember he was like thirty-something, and I thought that was wonderful that we did that and brought him on, and he's done remarkable things, a great person on top of it. And I'm really concerned about the math issue that Mr. Hackett brought forward. I'm looking forward to that report, because I know of a lot of parents that talk about the math issues with their students, and they can't get enough help with their students, because I don't understand the math, and I know some of the other parents out there don't understand the math. And when Mr., and I think I'm going to say his name wrong, the guy that was at the last back-to-school, Neloski? Neloski? He had the principal meeting with the principals over at West Valley. Oh, whatever. Anyway, he was talking about...
Nisfloni.
Nisfloni. I knew I was going to say it wrong, but he was talking about how, why would you give kids homework? And I know people will disagree with me on this topic, but why would you give a kid homework when they can't get it done at school, and you're going to make them take it home to a parent, they can't help them with it? All you did was cause more confusion in the family. I never thought of that before. That could have been my excuse years ago, but I agree with him on that. I mean, we need to find a way to get the support staff that the teachers need in our schools. We also need to find a way to communicate with parents, so that parents understand the reason why this child is bringing homework home. What is the real reason behind it? Not just because they didn't get to it, it should be a reason behind it, why you're sending that child homework. The other thing I wanted to say was, Senator John McCain, I have to say a few things about him. He is a real hero. I just want to let you guys know that if I ever pass away and you beat me in an election, you're not going to give my eulogy, okay? I just think that is so, I mean, just this true character, that at that level, that he was able to have two of the opponents that beat him in an election to come and give his eulogy. I just think that's just outstanding character, that's a real hero, and I hope a lot of kids look into his background, read about what he's done for this country, and look at him as a hero instead of, and I'm going to say this again, but superstar basketball players and singers and things of that nature. This man almost lost his life for our country, and our kids need to know about him and what he did for this country. But, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dominique. Mr. Jerome?
Just real quick, another congratulations to Mr. Angayek. I know him as Coach Mike, because I played on his baseball team when I was about going into second grade, and then again, about going into sixth grade. And just, it was, you know, perfectly evident from the first day of practice that he cared for every person on that field, and I'm sure that he cares for every single student of his school as well. So, keep up the good work, staff and students, and that's all I got.
Thank you. Dr. Kaboric?
Thank you. The board will receive specific flyers, but just a reminder that Wednesday, September nineteenth, and for most of the high schools, and then Thursday, September twentieth, for West Valley High School, are personalized learning lunch nights for the high schools. So, that's coming up in a couple of weeks. Brown bag lunches, be sure to sign up. You have to sign up with Sharon, so she can track attendance and make sure that we're, you know, within the confines of Open Meetings Act and that sort of thing. So, be sure to sign up for those dates, and then I'm sure there'll be horse trading later, too, so as people, you know, as calendars adjust. The budget committee, to get at Mr. Doran's comment, will again, start their work early. Their work is intense. In the fall, Mr. DeGraw and I have been working on a plan for that. I would suggest to Mr. Doran and anybody, if you have specifics, so administration puts together a proposed budget, ultimately, it's my recommendation to the board, departments, program managers feed me their recommendations for that, and I filter through that. So, if there's a particular department that you're hoping paid attention to a particular comment, you might send that to me, so I can send it to them, and then they'll filter through that and determine. So, I'm sure Sean heard the sports piece, but anyway, if there's other pieces that you're thinking, hey, can teaching and learning consider this? Send that to them, because you tracking on it might not mean they're tracking on it, or maybe they are, and, you know what I mean? So, send those if you have thoughts, and then that can all be part of the consideration that goes into my budget, so. And that's it. Thank you.
First, I want to say thank you to whoever put the aces pamphlet on our desks. Dr. Kaboric, thank you. This is a really nice pamphlet. It summarizes what many trainings I've done, actually, in this little pamphlet. So, I would encourage everyone just to look at even the part that says aces in Alaska
First, I want to say thank you to whoever put the aces pamphlet on our desks. Dr. Kaboric, thank you. This is a really nice pamphlet. It summarizes what many trainings I've done, actually, in this little pamphlet. So I would encourage everyone just to look at even the part that says aces in Alaska and the survey that showed that only 35% of our population in Alaska's had zero aces versus 64.4% have had one ace, and the impact on those, on the ace scores, and how that impacts the rest of their, a rest of an individual's life. Financial education, I'm really glad that that comment came up again. It's one of the things that I remember having conversations with, with Ms. Hull, and finding a way to work that into, actually into curriculum in a really meaningful way, a little bit more than what is currently done in some of the math or economics classes. So I hope that the board continues to track that. And in the meantime, helping staff work through the BONZI program, I think that's great. A homework policy, I'm really excited about that. Will be coming soon, I'm hopeful before the end of October, but if not, I will come and testify when it comes before the board. It's something that has been in the works, and I'm very thankful to everybody for working through those pieces. And then also start times, we have been tracking the Anchorage conversation and what the efforts that they've put into it, and where they, the last time we kind of had the conversation, and I don't know that anything's changed since, but I don't know that for sure, was that they were adjusting times so ever so slightly that it, we almost were already there. I think they're going to start high school at 8 o'clock, and we're at 7:45. And so, you know, I think that if the board wants to have that discussion and have some research done in our own community, that certainly is an option. But we were kind of just tracking what the conversation was in Anchorage and thinking that that's, a lot of those same comments and feelings and all of the things that were going on through that research process would probably apply here. But it's certainly not, I mean, if the board feels passionate about looking at that information, we certainly know that the research is there that supports a later start time for our older students, that how we get there in our community, I think, is where we, people get hung up,